Okay. It's October 28th, this is the Shawshin Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District School Committee. Everyone on the school committee except for Ms. Gillis is here. And, flagrant allegiance. Stacy, you want to?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one has signed up for public comment? Student representative, we have new student representative?
Hello?
It's my pleasure to introduce Mackenzie Miller. Mackenzie is a grade 11 metal fab student and is also part of our Skills USA leadership team. So, Mackenzie, I will turn it over to you, and floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. McIntosh. So, like Mr. McIntosh said, I'm a junior, I'm in metal fabrication and engineering technologies here at Shawshin. I'm in the Skills USA program and I serve as the secretary last year and currently this year. Next year, I'll be running for president, if possible. And I'm also running for state leader. So, I will be running for the secretary position as a state officer in Massachusetts District. And, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the stuff that we have going on right now. So, the school, Skills USA, is actually working on a holiday party, as we did last year. We are working with the state officers right now. And, we're doing a holiday party for the House of Hope in Lowell. It is a domestic violence house. And, we provide the kids and some of the adults with the experience they might not be able to have elsewhere or with their families. And, we have Mr. Francis actually come in, one of our automotive teachers, as Santa on the fire truck with the Baroka Police Department. And, we hand out presents, and it's the most amazing time. And, I'm so honored that I get to sit here and tell you guys all about it. It's something I'm very passionate about, as well as the Toys for Tots, working with the Baroka Police Department. Last year, we collected 314 toys as a school. The teachers donate, the students donate. It's such an amazing opportunity that everyone at Shawshin can come together and just donate their time and their effort and their money to do something bigger. And, I would like, I would really love for the committee to become one with Skills USA, not just because I'm on the team, but because we do so many great things for, like, the five sending towns that we have, and especially for the state. It, I just think it's, we're so blessed, really, as a school, to have such an amazing leadership team. As well as our Spirit Week and our prep rally. Last week, we had a really good Spirit Week and all the kids participated. We had people come in in bald caps, wigs, tutus, everyone was just being themselves. It was so amazing, as well as the prep rally. Everyone showed their school spirit. We had a bunch of our teachers dressing up in inflatable costumes and running around the field. It was amazing. Pie eating contest, we had tug of war, and it's, it's amazing. We have PSATs, the PSATs tomorrow for juniors. And, we have, we'll see. We have the freshmen starting their explore cycle number five. And, as someone who's a junior working in metal fab, I get the honor to work with the freshmen. And, they're all, they're amazing. I can't ask for anything less. They work as hard as they can, and I think Ms. Cook and Mr. McIntosh does a really good job, like, letting the kids know that they, like, Shawshin is probably one of the best vocational high schools that you could go to to get the experience like this. No judgment or anything, I know I go here, so I can't say anything about that. But, it's, it's really amazing, and that's all I really have to say, and I'm so honored to be here. So, I appreciate everyone listening, and I can't thank you guys enough.
Thank you. Honored to have you, and enthusiasm is amazing. So, if we could start every meeting like that, that's happy. That would be great.
Mackenzie, which of the, which of our towns are you from?
I'm from Chooksberry, I apologize.
Oh, of course.
All right. I am going to ask my committee if they would like to take something out of order, which is the curriculum subcommittee. Particularly, the MSBA, no, yeah, the MSBA Chapter 74 Vocational Educational, out of that document. And, so, I need to do a vote on this, so can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we take it out of. Take it out of.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then a unanimous vote. Oh, and I forgot to mention that Ms. Gillis came in one minute late, so my apologies. My apologies for not waiting that.
My apologies for my late arrival.
Okay, so, this is the subcommittee report. I guess we'll start with, who want to talk about the subcommittee? Do you want to give a report first?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully by now you've read the minutes, and you know that we met on October 7th. At that time, we were presented from the leadership team with three, we had three agenda items. One was the MSBA Educational Profile Questionnaire, which we reviewed and we discussed, and we voted to move it to this, this meeting tonight. The MSBA Chapter 74 Vocational Education Viability Documentation, that was the second item on the agenda. And, we reviewed that. The committee members that had questions, we asked questions. That is where the issue or the item with the automotive came up, auto body. It was discussed that that was a bigger discussion, and we wanted to bring it to the full committee for more discussion, because, you know, personally, we weren't comfortable, like, making a decision like that without some more information, so we moved it to bring it to tonight's conversation. And, as a result of that, you know, we have a lot of people here tonight. We have a lot of people in the CAF. We've, as a committee, have received almost over 100 emails from different stakeholders in the communities in our five sending towns. You know, people have presented a lot of argument for, a lot of support for the program. At the time, when we met on October 7th, we were told that, you know, the, it was proposed due to low enrollment, and that, you know, that was the main reason for putting that on the MSBA document. As part of that, as you'll see on the agenda, we have some instructor testimony, business and industry testimony, and then some more discussion, hopefully, so. And then the last item, just so we're clear, there was another item on there regarding the master schedule. At the time, we did decide to hold off on that. Tony had, you know, it was disappointing that we had to, but that was his recommendation, was to hold off on changes to the master schedule for now. And, that's what we discussed.
And I just, just clarify that last one.
Yeah.
We were still waiting for additional information on the competency determination piece, so we had asked to hold off on making a final decision until we got that done.
Did it have something to do with MCAS, too?
Yeah. Well, that's the competency determination, MCAS.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's pretty much where we're at, and.
I guess I will now ask for instructor testimony? Are they both here? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Verbatim.
Verbatim. It's verbatim, I ignore it. Yeah, go ahead. Alright. So, is it possible to use those? I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. That's okay. Absolutely. I don't like. Alright. So, like, I really don't know. Alright. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Doc Angelo, I have been one of the instructors here at Shawshin for the past six years. Transitioning from industry to teaching has been one of the greatest career decisions that I've made. I'm a product of Minuteman Tech in Lexington, from the collision repair program, where I found my passion for the industry. Now, I'm able to help kids discover their own, discover and cultivate their own passion for this industry. It is truly rewarding experience every day. It came to a great shock to us three weeks ago, when we discovered that the auto collision repair program was going to be left out of the new build, out of the plans for a new facility. The worst day of teaching here, for me, definitely was the day we had to inform our students of the plans that were happening behind the scenes. The reactions rarely were devastating. The greatest impact in closing of this program and not including it in a new building will be on the students. Here, these students can be themselves, learn a skill, and thrive. This program allows them to discover a passion and a craft that they, that will set themselves up for a successful career. In the past six years, I've actually seen a lot of changes in our students, in their mentality and their confidence over the past six years. They're getting more involved with the community, they're getting more involved with the school. That was never a thing six years ago with our students. They're becoming more and more, there, some students are actually able to get on National Honor Society, other ones are joining student council and trying to go those roads, which has been a big thing. Kids coming out of this program are quickly placed in higher paying jobs, educationally debt free. These kids have also given Shawshin a great reputation in the local industry with their impressive skills and work ethic. They're knowledgeable, and they know what they're doing when they leave here. They work hard. So, closing this program would actually substant, substantially impact the industry, as well as local businesses. So, the average age for an auto body technician now is 54 years old. The industry needs younger kids who are tech savvy to fill these gaps of the retiring workforce, to keep, to keep up all the changes in the, technology changes in the industry. Work mentality is evolving from a craftsman to a high tech, a high tech technician, as the vehicles are constantly changing. The auto collision program prepares kids for these changes. These kids will be better at diagnosing and repairing these systems, because their generation has grown up with this more advanced technology. Even through the processes, even though process is becoming more computerized, this industry will not be touched by the AI boom. No accident is the same, no car is the same. This is truly a skilled craft and a labor service that cannot be automated. Every, every accident is different and requires a sophisticated eye to identify these issues, develop a repair plan, and execute with the greatest attention to detail. The fundamental stop in this program set these kids up for careers, not only as technicians, but also working in adjacent areas such as appraisers, parts and supplies, manufacturing, and even shop ownership. If you're better than accident or needed a repair done recently, you felt some of the strain in the resources on the collision repair shops, by the way, of longer wait times for service. If this program is unable to provide local businesses with the workforce, this issue will continue to get worse. If shops aren't able to fill the positions, they will be forced to close down. Auctions will dwindle down and costs will rise. Instead of closing the program, I would consider, I would like Shawshin to consider taking a page out of Northeast and showcasing the program with the community more. And, we actually have someone here that's going to speak on a little bit about that. You got to him. To highlight the technical changes, partner with local businesses to showcase all the opportunities. With the design and construction of a new school, there is a phenomenal opportunity to design a state of the art facility that would better align with the technology of today, setting students up, setting future students up for greater success. Investing in this way will also attract potential, more potential students, increasing enrollment. This program is vital to the students, local industry, and community. For the sake of everyone in this room and in the cafeteria, please try to keep this program alive. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies for my late arrival.
Mark?
No, I have a question for you. How many people are in the cafeteria doing that? Ballpark? There's a bunch out here, we can't. Thank you. There's a lot. Sorry, Mr. Pucci.
It's quite a few, but I'm not sure exactly how many. There's more, yeah, it's more arriving. Good evening, thank you for giving us the time to speak tonight. My name is Dennis Rupucci, one of the other instructors in the shop. We find that some of things are, an incredible understanding. So, we're in an industry evolving and advancing rapidly. Vehicles produced after 2010 considered technical models, offering state of the art materials used to construction and crash avoidance systems that are only dreamt of less than 20 years ago. The need for well-trained entry level technicians is increasing faster than the blue collar industries across this country. The hands-on approach to repair vehicles will never change as the procedure variables adjust to each meet, meet crash. In my nearly 25 years in the industry prior to becoming teaching, I have never experienced two identical crashes, dents, or scratches, or crashes. Which leads me to believe they will never need, they will never need an A for AI or robots to do what we do, because, like he said, hand touch and the eye, human eye, to see everything needs to be done. Repair procedures are just constantly to fill the needs of property, need to properly restore vehicle to its pre-accident condition, what it looked like before the crash. The misconception is that we're training next generation of panel beaters and Bondo slingers, which is absolutely the myth we face today. The error, the error of the body man is long gone and will never return. Teaching students principles of safety engineering, knowledge of specialized metals used to construction, and how the computerized avoidance systems work is just the tip of the iceberg in collision repair understanding. Requesting purchases and scanning equipment repeatedly suggested by the advisors in our yearly dinner to properly introduce students with the equipment they will face on co-op. All vehicles after 2010 require mandatory calibration operations, which ensures the repairs are complete and customers receive a vehicle back that is now safe for the road. Well-trained students enter the workforce as respected and valued employees. And I just want to note some small factors. A few years ago, we extended an invitation to a large collision repair center in Danvers. This was mentioned through the current, the old cluster chair I had, and I asked permission to go see the vocational director. So, I went to vocational director, asked if any or all school committee members, all administrators, and every in guidance would be interested to tour this facility to see firsthand what is at stake daily in our industry. Meet the general manager of a Fortune 500 company's collision center and ask questions and gain insight on the inner workings of collision repair. Unfortunately, I was told nobody was interested. So, I just want to let you know that invitation still stands, and we will coordinate anything and all of it, if anybody's interested to visit this facility and talk to the manager of this company, and just see how we do, what we do, and why we're passionate about teaching. So, thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there going to be other presentations? Because I have some questions on separate red, but we have to wait till then, because I might have questions for the instructor, and I'm definitely a question. But you guys.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I will tell you, Autobody was a reason I got involved in Shawshin Tech. I took Autobody at night here.
Okay.
And restored a Mustang. So, now, do you guys do any type of that type of thing?
Restoration?
Yeah.
No, because having a vehicle here for more than two plus years is really difficult to have students involved and excited every day.
You do, huh?
Yeah. We do have several students who graduated and now working in restoration shops.
Yes.
So, we have Marion Williams and a couple other students, who was a national participant in Skills USA twice.
But do you do any type of that, not maybe total restoration, but?
We will do mostly the small stuff that our body shop will do, simply because a lot of people come in, do not want to wait too long. I've had customers come in for a bumper, a fender, and a headlight and ask, can I wait for it? Which could take a couple weeks. So, so this will be misunderstanding. People understand how entailed, or how involved what we do. And, especially, you know, we have six hours a day, then the kids have their lunch break, getting them back to work after lunch, and keeping things going and the flow going. And every other week with ninth graders, which we do not allow do too much work on customer cars, because they are paying customers. So, we do our best to keep the flow going, but it kind of, every other week, it kind of ups and downs for speed and production. So, restoration is something we turned away because nobody wants to leave the car here for two plus years. And, we do have, we do have a small footprint, so it's kind of tough to have something taken all apart and taken up all that space. So, it is, more space is needed for the.
On that, a lot of this generation is not into classic muscle cars to restore. They will go by, like, a Honda Civic. That's what they would rather.
Horror.
They're not going.
The horror.
That's, yeah, that's that generation's horror. Sorry.
So, so about how many cars, I mean, how many people do you get? Is it all, is it a lot of students' cars that you're working on, or is it a?
We, we do a small amount of student stuff. It's, it's probably mostly people in the community. I think we're generating close between $7,000 and $9,000 a year in repairs. So, we, we have a list of all the repair orders we do. We do as much as we can. By the end of the year, things kind of slow down. Then we have coming will be Thanksgiving, winter break, February vacation, April vacation. So, we really have to stagger it out, and most people understand it takes longer, but not enough. Not enough people understand how long it takes.
Done anywhere else, it's a long time.
Not really. If you're working a shop where, you know, where they have somebody working eight hours, an actual professional, it booms a lot quicker. So, having 14 to 16 year olds do it, it will take longer. Sometimes it has to be done twice. It has to be redone, so, yes.
I know that Autobody's numbers have been low for a number of years. And I know a couple of years ago, you guys got that really cool spray booth, which I would.
Through a grant, yes.
Right, which I would assume is a selling point. What have you guys been able to do as yourselves with school administration, with your advisory committee, to promote the shop? I mean, because, yes, right now, there's this actual threat, but attendance has been low for a long time. Can you share what you've been able to do?
The biggest things that would hold us off of using all the ninth graders to still do all the painting is the school requires a respirator questionnaire, signed by their doctor, to make sure they don't have asthma. If they don't return that, then they can't spray anything. So, really hampered by that. We do have some fresh, fresh air hoods, so freshmen can do their small projects, but it's a very small amount, which is safer, but it is fresh air. They're wearing paint suits and gloves, so they are protected. But to have students, have freshmen come in, would love to sand and paint an entire car, it's kind of difficult because of the chemical dangers and the requirements of the questionnaire, signed by a doctor, not to do that.
So, do you feel we miss out on those kids because through exploratory, they don't get a full experience?
I think quite a few people, it has been very successful at Northeast, because I know another teacher over there, he's a friend of mine. And, on their freshmen, they have them paint an entire car, and from start to finish. And they do it every, every exploratory. It's been very successful for them. The kids love it, because they get to see it from start to finish, change the color, they get to sand it, mask it all up, tape it all up.
Right.
Clean it, paint it, and see it when it's finished. So, it's very successful for them. So, we are fighting, trying to get through and navigate the safe issue, and also working on the respirator issue with the questionnaire. It's usually safe for upperclassmen who have to do it every year, the questionnaire.
So, at Northeast for the ninth graders, are they wearing respirator masks, or?
They have, they wear paint suits, they wear gloves, they have a respirator, but they don't have the requirement that we do for the questionnaire for the respirator. So, without that, we're kind of hesitant, because a small amount, it is legal to have a student use this much paint, have them use this much paint, it changes the needs of them in this building. So.
So, is that something we require specifically here, or?
Yeah, this school has been, and required it for several years now. I have asked them to turn it home the end of June, because quite, quite a few students have doctor appointments in the summertime for, where they're having their, their stuff for coming up for sports next year. So, having somebody come back, coming back to school and say, we need this by November, or you can't go on co-op, or you're upperclassmen, we take you up, go up. Most people have their kids go to the doctors in the summertime, now they have to add, add a second appointment, which means they have to leave work. So, we're trying to coordinate it so that they can get it done quicker, so they can come back to school with it already signed, and we can roll faster. As far as with the freshmen, we're not too sure what to do with that. We're, we're working with our advisors with that as well. Trying to find, so, we do have the water-based paint. It is still chemicals that are dangerous, they're safer for the environment, but they're just reduced with water, so there's still the safety of the chemicals exposed to the students. So, we do have the paint suits, we have the gloves. The, the fresh air hoods, we're only allowed four at a time in the booth, because, you know, there's only four hoses in there for that. But we do our best with that. We still make it as exciting, have everybody have fun, so the freshmen go home with two projects, they airbrush a license plate, and then they, we have a Cybertruck pieces, they bend it all together, they weld it on one of the welders we got a few years ago, a really nice resistance spot welder, and they will paint that as well. They could take those two projects home. And we have been doing, which we are doing again, which is Project Explore, and we'll go back into the summer stuff as well. I've had so many students in the last eight years coming in as freshmen, saying, oh, I remember coming to here for the summer, I still have my license plate, it's hanging on my wall at home. So, they are enjoying that. It's just trying to pump that up as far as a bigger project. They won't be taking, if they paint a car, they won't take it home, but that's something they're always going to remember. And then we also have a painted hood, where they do their own paint designs, where they hand paint everything. And then we're trying to take a picture like that and put it on the Instagram page we have for the shop. So, trying to keep everybody excited, show more. And when students leave, we do the survey every week. Usually, the biggest problem and complaint they have is there's no way to sit for break. We had milk crates that didn't end well. So, yes, just two quick questions. Are we the only school that has this respirator requirement? Are there others?
I'm not too sure about that. I'll have to reach out. I know people at LinTech and Neshova, I will reach out, I know somebody in Whittier, I can reach out and see what their requirements are.
Do you know how long this has been in place, this requirement with us?
I'm going to say, no, less than six years, maybe more. Yeah.
So, we don't know why it came in?
I know, it's, it is a state of the art requirement, and I understand that 100%. But the, the requirement of a doctor's signature, I think it may be easy to have it done at the end of the year when they come in next fall year, already signed, instead of trying to get a second appointment.
That's kind of my question. When does, when do the ninth graders get that? When do they get the?
So, they're giving, they're giving that document the first or second week of school. It comes down from the vocational director's office, or they mail it directly home, they make their appointments, the doctor sign it. It's true, no student has asthma or issues like that. Make sure if they put a respirator on there and it hampers their breathing, we don't have any issues like that.
So, Northeast has that requirement, or doesn't?
I do not think they do, because every freshman is painted asthma. Yeah, so they do not. So, Mr. Tilly knows, because he was the one who was working with Northeast as an advisor as well.
I guess the question, I don't.
That's okay.
If the program continues on, would it be feasible to, we know who the freshmen coming in are, before, to send them the letters for those who might be thinking about Autobody?
This is the first time I heard about this being a roadblock. But I can, I, I, I know the superintendent at Northeast very well. I can call Dave tomorrow and have that conversation when we find out exactly what they've done over there. And again, I wasn't here when I was implemented. I don't know that. I don't have the history.
Yeah, it is, it is new to, to him, he wouldn't know about it.
Yeah, no, I just like, it makes more sense. I mean, yeah, if you got, if you give them to it in September, the first few classes, they're never going to get a doctor's note on time.
Especially coming into cold and fever season like that, getting a doctor's appointment is not easy. I got two 17-year-old, just turned 17 today. Getting a doctor's appointments when they're sick is not easy right now. So, yes.
First of all, I appreciate the comments that both you and Mark have made. I, I would first mention that I don't know if any of us on the committee ever received an invitation to visit a collision repair, but that sounds much more exciting than visiting my office, so we would be glad to do that. Several of the letters that we received, and I'm thinking of one instruction people and several others, talked about the transferability of skills, that even if kids start out here or historically in the auto collision program, and they don't, even if they don't stay with it, they wind up transferring those skills to other places, which is something that the school as a general matter has been, has been working on. places, which is something that the school as a general matter has been, has been working on. Want to ask about the reverse. Are, are some of the skills that are learned in other places, advanced manufacturing, metals, welding, uh, robotics, materials programs, three D printing, are those transferable into jobs in?
One hundred percent. So if you look at some of the things we do in, in, in fixing any vehicle, we do the collision repair, fixing the dents and, and painting and stuff like that. But if something is damaged deeply into it, you're gonna talk about coolings with the heating and cooling, air conditioning, electrical. Uh, the automotive part doing suspension work and changing like components would be a water pump or steering suspension or rear ax, rear axles are bent. So there's quite a few things that we, you know, we, we shape things, we beautify things, but we, all the aspects. So as far as like the three D printer, on the high-end stuff, so I, I watch some of the custom TV shows and they're doing like five million dollar cars, so they will print out their own parts like that. But that stuff is, as the cost of the creating that stuff is coming down, more shops are using, shop use for small stuff. But for big and components, it's, it's very, it's getting more viable in the trade, I believe, for the printing.
And related to that, for kids who are not able to access these particular training opportunities inside a vocational school, and we are not the only vocational school that has been through this. Sadly, uh, Mark's, Mark D'Angelo's alma mater. Uh, Minuteman did this several years ago, uh, sorry to say. But for kids who aren't able to access within a vocational school setting, where are the opportunities? Has the industry developed its own training outlets to serve its own needs?
There are some vocational colleges, yeah. There are a few vocational colleges. Um, where it starts around thirty thousand dollars. Um, the closest would probably be National Community College. Um, and then the bigger ones would be Lincoln Tech or YO Tech, which is Wyoming. Uh, so they're not as close as they used to be. But at the cost, it's almost like a loan when they're done, they have to work that off. Now when they get out of that, they still have to buy tools. So I was in the industry for close to twenty-five years and I amassed tools, about seventy thousand dollars worth of tools. So if somebody can learn better here and apply that money in their first job towards build up their tools and stuff like that to help their uh, skills excel and, and get polished, then it would be a lot better, I think, than spending all that money at a college and having to pay that debt before you can start buying your tools. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, you mentioned Northeast, just, this is not for, for everybody to think about, but you mentioned Northeast, you know. We're not the first oak school to go through this, you know, basically MSBA project, and it's not the first oak school that offers like uh, auto body programs. I guess it's for all of us to think about, like, like you've mentioned Northeast, like maybe other schools, what they've done to kind of promote the program.
They were on, they were on the, on the edge of where we are today. And they, they were given the time to turn it around, show the interest and increase, increase enrollment. And that's what we're asking for tonight.
No, I, I agree. I think that's something we maybe should look at, like if we're not the first oak school, like you're starting to see like the transition to more, you know, uh, more schools getting done generally.
And I think if, excepting that invitation for that facility to see that, we definitely have a couple of small brand new minibuses. We could bring everybody over to see that and you could ask you some questions to the manager of that place.
No, like I knew Northeast had an auto, but the other, I don't know which, probably won't look, but I'm saying like which ones have still have it, like you've mentioned what they've done to kind of turn around. I think that's like would be an education for everybody to know that.
This is, this is some of our struggles too, is we want, we want them all to survive because they're closing the other one at Essex. So when that was a brand new facility about eight years ago, around eight years ago. So it's, it's difficult for people in the industry to lose that little valve of employees to come out of.
I, I completely know what your reference, I mean, I'm definitely not gonna be an auto body expert, but I can tell you last time my wife's car got fixed, the guy going with is fantastic and he's probably sixty and
Yeah, so the better we can train them, the better they are.
And he bought the business from somebody else and I don't think his kids are going into it, so I think he's actually gonna close the
I actually have a former student here tonight who bought the body shop. I put him in a co-op fifteen years ago. He just bought the shop. So it's really nice to see them succeed as much like that too.
I just wanna say Dennis, you and Mark are exceptional teachers. And I wanna tell you, the jobs I've had to do, your kids. I'm so impressed.
Thank you.
And I love what's going on down there. So I appreciate your talents. Several jobs, and I know you tell the people upfront, we know that. I taught here thirty years. I'm not taking your job. I know Dennis, they come off the street, they think you're, you're the wizard, you're looking. No, man, you tell them upfront. I can't, we can't do this. These are kids.
Right.
When we took the intern and I, we took the broker finance committee through there, they had a lot of questions. A lot of these people never saw this place first thing. We said, yeah, we do a lot of work with the kids, but we gotta be patient.
We always tell our students after they graduate, you know, the doors are always open. If you wanna come and talk to us about advancing to another out of the career or out of the career. And the same thing, administration and, and school committee and guidance, the doors are always open. If you have any questions, please come down. And ask us any questions. You're more than welcome.
So I have a, are you done Charlie?
Yes, yes.
So, so, oh, I'm sorry Charlie, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I was looking at some of the statistics he has sent out about for the last like ten years, I think. One year I popped out, there was like twenty more kids over a lot of the other years. And I'm curious, do you have any idea why that might have been?
So one year we did have twelve in a waiting list years ago. We had two well-trained teachers and an aide from the industry. And the lead teacher at the time let him run, let, let us run it the way we want, and we changed a little bit more exciting stuff because he was from the custom side too, the, the aide we had. And it really made very exciting for these students and we had a waiting list. And at the end of it, he said, okay, you guys done? Okay, we're going back to the way it was and this is where we are, so. Trying to get somebody in here to help us who can just bring it all the way around. Right now we do the, the collision as much as we can, which is quite a bit. But having the other custom side too as well to see this all as part of it as well.
I think that's part of the issue is recruitment. Maybe there's less kids that are interested, but when you get it, they're not getting excited.
It was unfortunate, several years ago, we were getting fifteen freshmen each week. Now they knocked it down to twelve, so we have fewer exposures to students as well. So that's forty less students a year.
Why, and why is that?
I don't know, it wasn't our choice.
Was it a
Yeah, it was, it was before twenty I get here.
Was it tightens or?
I, we were just old.
So, so yeah, actually I have two questions. So I was gonna ask about the teacher ratio to kids, like, so are there two full-time teachers in there right now?
There is, yes.
And it's all, all the time for the program? And do you have an aide coming in also or?
Um, so on freshman week, we're, we're really nice to have, we're plenty, we're blessed to have Mr. Sweeney come down. He's, he bounces between automotive from time to time, but he's in metal fab and advanced manufacturing. He's a whiz in those things. He has a lot of automotive knowledge. But they are that different. So he can help the kids. He's picking up a lot of the projects we're doing. He's really good with that. But it comes to mixing paint, matching paint, um, all stuff like that. It's really critical to being well-trained in that, so.
And are the kids engaged all the time when, when they're in the program?
Yes. Yes, so the biggest problem is like when, when, when I'm in class, he's there by himself on this week. And on that week, he goes to related, when he comes back, I'm leaving, so, and the freshmen and the juniors, we're trying to keep them busy so they can be ready for co-op in April. Uh, so we're just trying to keep everything going. Keep the flow going and keep the excitement, excitement going for the freshmen as well.
So, so my second question is, if you, if you could dream about, of course, keeping this program, what would you want to see in place in order to make it as successful as it could be?
Oh, there's quite a few things. I mean, if we could find an easier way to get through like the, the documents for the respirator form, which if we could do it early in the year, like or the end of the year, so following year. Um, and see if we could do something towards a well-trained in the industry uh, uh, in aid. So we were more successful because if one of us in class and the other one can go this far, instead of somebody go all the way. Um, because if one of us, so if the aide is in the shop with the, with the freshman and one of us is in the spray booth, it could take an hour and a half to paint the car. So to have the freshmen going and the juniors at the same time, it's, 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 it's a little difficult.
So you're talking about additional staffing?
Yes, so with, with the trade, with the trained aide, we probably could have them going to related as well, so the two instructors could be in the shop and keep the flow going because they're experienced.
And what about other resources that you would need?
So the cost of everything has gone up, so if we're gonna paint a car with a freshman every week, you're talking um, probably about four to five hundred dollars per vehicle and that's every other week. So the cost is, it gets up there. Yeah. So we're working with our advisors, stuff like that, but the same thing, we wanna make sure everybody's on board. We're not violating any safety things with the respirators and we're gonna make sure the students are safe and are allowed to do what we're asking them to do as well. Their safety is the most important thing for us.
Would you want more freshmen to explore?
Oh, absolutely.
And you feel like they, you would be able to handle that, like numbers?
So I started here in two thousand and ten and for the first, until they changed it, we had no problem with fifteen freshmen, ever. It was just handed down to us, it's like, well, you're only gonna get twelve now. I was like, okay.
Did you have an aide then?
I think that was right after, so when the uh, the other instructor, so the aide left, the other instructor retired and I was running it for at least a year by myself with no aide. And I would get like a gym teacher to stand there and make sure the kids weren't getting hurt or stuff like that, so. Trying to keep things going though for that year or so was, was difficult, but uh, the aide who can do what we do is what we really do.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Eric Pete?
Maybe two groups.
Okay.
Hello. Good evening everyone. My name is Eric Pete and I'm honored to be here representing passionate group, advisory committee members and more broadly the auto collision industry across eastern Massachusetts. I'm the proud owner of three thriving collision centers and been blessed to operate successfully for over a decade. I spent twenty-five years in this industry and it all started at second high school, Plattech in Milford, Connecticut, where I graduated in two thousand and one. My journey began during my senior year through a co-op program and I've never looked back. I've been surrounded by brilliant, driven and passionate people who helped me grow. Now I'm here to pay it forward to the next generation of collision repair professionals. Although I'm new to the Shawshank Advisory Committee, I've had the privilege of serving as chair of the Northeast Metro Tech Advisory Committee for nearly eight years. Over the years, I've also proudly employed many talented tech school graduates, individuals who are now building strong, meaningful careers. So let's address the bigger picture. While current enrollment numbers at Shawshank Tech may not fully reflect it, the auto collision industry is not fading. It's growing and very rapidly. It's a stable, thriving and evolving field with countless opportunities for young people to carve their own unique path. Unfortunately, many technical school programs focus only a small slice of what this industry has to offer. As a result, students and parents often don't see the full range of career options from hands-on repair to estimating, insurance work, technology integration, management and beyond, all of which you can see highlighted here in the many different facets that our collision industry has to offer. Through active involvement at Northeast, we have seen how engaged advisory committees can transform programs into dynamic, real-world training grounds. We've done this through hands-on demonstrations, open houses and direct conversations with parents, helping them understand how promising and resilient this career path can be. And here at Shawshank, something powerful has already happened. That's gotten all of our attention. In just over a couple of weeks' time, a small yet diverse group of passionate people from across the industry have rallied together. They've raised awareness and stood up for the importance of preserving and strengthening the collision program here at Shawshank. This model has worked before. At Northeast, a program was on the brink of being cut, but because the advisory committee stepped up, offered knowledge and support and partnered with the school, the program was not only saved, it was set on a path to thrive and advisory committees can't do it alone. For these programs to grow and attract students, schools must listen, collaborate and provide the support instructors need to make these programs shine. Transformation doesn't happen overnight, but it can't happen at all if program disappears. So I ask everyone, why not try harder? Why not be the school that champion a resilient, future-ready career path? One that gives students the skills and stability to thrive no matter where the economy shifts. This is an industry that has weathered every storm. It offers students a pathway to success, security, and most importantly, pride in their craft. With that, Patrick Tully, who is one of our counterparts, he'll share some vital data and statistics that have underscored why this program is not just worth keeping, but worth investing in many years to come. Thank you.
I'll expect he's not my strongest student, I'll tell you that right now, so I apologize. Just, it's actually funny that um, adult ed auto body is what brought you here. Fifteen years ago, I taught adult ed um, collision repair and finishing at Northeast. That's what brings me here now. Like I said, my name's Patrick Tully. I'm the owner of Factory Collision Center in Middleton, Massachusetts. I'm a proud member of the advisory board here at Shawshank and at Northeast Metro Tech. Uh, I've worked alongside with many talented graduates from here at Shawshank and as well at Northeast. I've seen firsthand the difference that this program can make not just our students, but the entire industry. Um, our last advisory meeting, we were told the collision program is being phased out due to low numbers. I understand that's a tough choice we made and those need to be made sometimes. I'm here to clearly say, this program is far too valuable to lose. Collision repair is a seventy-two billion dollar a year industry in the US and it is continuing to grow. More than six million vehicles are in an accident every single year logged through the insurance committee in America. Seventy percent of those logged in are paid through for, through insurance companies, which makes it a stable and recession-proof company, uh, job. Uh, in the Middlesex County alone, there's three hundred and thirty-four registered collision repair facilities. Although there's more than three hundred thousand technicians in the US, the opportunities go far beyond turning wrenches. Uh, this field leads to careers in estimating paintings, uh, supply chain, manufacturing and insurance. This isn't just a trade, it's a gateway to a long life, long-term life rewarding of careers. We've seen program turnarounds like this. A few years ago, Northeast, as you know, faced similar enrollment challenges. By opening the doors through open houses, tech nights, field trips and bringing in industrial professionals into the classroom, we helped rebuild that program. Students came back, energy came back, the future came back, and we can do the same here. This is urgent. The average collision repair technician in the US is forty-five years old. In my shop alone, it is fifty-eight years old. My youngest tech under sixty-two years old is forty-four years old. That should tell us something. This industry is aging and we need our next generation. Not in five years, not tomorrow, not, not yet, we need it today. Uh, this industry, this isn't the industry it was decades ago. Uh, people are working on electrical, electric vehicles and driver assistance programs. This is cutting-edge computer technology. We need bright, driven students that can thrive in this environment. We need programs like Shawshank can be to get that there for them to start. As a board member, I need this program. As a business owner, I depend on it. Someone who believes in the future of the trade, I'm asking that you help us fight for it. Uh, whether the students here know it or not, they deserve the opportunity as well to continue with this program. That's all I got. Any questions?
You did such a great job public speaking.
Yeah, not really. Better questions instead.
So I know, as advised, you, you, you'd all get together after the dinner and you discuss the new trend, going trends and things like that.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, do you see anything on, at our body, auto body shop that we shouldn't be having, that we, we have, because I know they put in their budget, it goes up the chain and certain things get chopped for whatever reason, because we can only, everybody wants everything and we can't give everybody everything. But is there any big thing that you can, that stands out to you that would make the recruitment of kids?
Uh, yeah.
Your end of the field as opposed to
Exactly, and, and how many folks going to this, Eric, Eric also played an extremely important role in this. Our, our biggest thing is just moving forward onto the positive. When we were at the tech night, unfortunately, you got bombarded a few times. It, it was very passionate, we're very passionate about it. We, we're all very involved in this. Uh, like I said, I've had a lot of students come from this program. Uh, I'm not saying how things went here in the past, I'm looking towards the future and I'm not saying how things have gone at Northeast. When I was opening my shop, uh, Eric's shop was beginning to start to thrive and the things he brought in, I actually implemented a minor that's helped me as well. A lot of it is scanning vehicles. Um, insurance, what is insurance basically? It's, it's passing the buck off to see who's liable for something. At the end of the day, that's what it is. We scan every single car that comes into the building. You need proper scanning equipment and calibration equipment. So when the car comes in, you can teach a student how to plug a car in. Right now I have it to the point in my shop, I have such advanced technology, I can have someone that cleans the cars able to actually just plug it in, students, uh, co-op kids, plug it in, scan it and print us the report. They hand the report to the next person, we're able to read it and diagnose what is going on with the vehicle. They hand the report to the next person, we're able to read it and diagnose what is going on with the vehicle. This is all new stuff. Um, even when I worked as a flat rate technician 12 years ago, we weren't doing this. Uh, in cars today, they're required, 2015 and above vehicles, 75% of them that earn an accident require ADAS calibration. This is all new. Bringing the program into the modern century of how we do work now is very important. It's not like Mr. Pucci said, just panel beating and sanding Bondo and painting cars on the floor. It's a lot different. Technology is driving this industry right now. Right now, there's only 5% of the cars on the road that are electric, which it seems a lot more, but that's the area we live in. And that is continuing to grow daily, no matter what anyone tells you. My shop alone, I don't, I don't have the proper training for full lines of electric vehicles. We're working on that. It's hard to keep up, it's expensive to keep up, and I understand that. Everything is through grants and you have to really push for it. As the advisory board, we do our best. I, I know that there's been multiple, um, field trips to Eric's shops. I've had a couple at my shop. Uh, we've brought other people into the shop to show the different avenues of what we can do. Um, going back to what you said about restoration work, I, I completely understand why, and that's the first thing we saw when we went into the shop. You have to get restoration out of collision because it is totally different. I own a restoration shop, so I sound like a terrible hypocrite saying that. I own a restoration shop as well. That's an avenue you can take from learning auto body. I also do a lot of work for Signart out of, um, uh, no, we actually just moved to the new shop that, oh, my kitty's there, sorry. Um, I, I do a lot of bodywork and paint them. He has his own full-time bodywork and paint guy working on his signs. If he gets overwhelmed, he sends me stuff. Restoration is an avenue that leaves from auto body. More collision repair than anything and sign, it just, it spreads off a little bit everywhere. There's other avenues that kids can go. By closing this one gateway, that whole web really just collapses.
And that web is very much present here in the very different avenues that you can go, whether it's at the top of the chain being a collision shop owner, which anybody who's passionate about it definitely strives for. Within the shop, you have an estimator, somebody who is assisting in the damage appraisals of these cars that come in. They play a very, very pivotal role in what's taking place. Alongside them, you have a blue printer, which is the liaison between the estimator and the technician to help them visually understand what it is they need to do to this car. Making communication as simple as possible to eliminate any errors, but just making the whole process that much easier. You have your technicians, which again, all the salary ranges are on here. Your technicians, your insurance aspects, which can branch off into a bunch of different directions. Your finished technicians is the painter. Manufacturer reps, these are people who work for various supply companies that come in. They present all the different tools, technologies, supplies, different things that the shops need to thrive. Same thing with the supply company rep as well as the tech rep all kind of tied in. Um, and then people within the parts room. And these are just a small handful of the things that play a very key role in the shops.
And we ran out of room.
I want to go back to something you just said when it comes down to funding. A lot of advisory committees are willing to supplement and inject their own funds to make these programs work because these programs play such a pivotal role in the success of our shops. You know, when Pat was talking about the role we played with Northeast, something as simple as estimating. We donated three laptops and three workstations to the department to allow students to be able to do mobile estimating, which is something which is very prominent within the field. For them to be hands-on, on the car, they're working with fellow students, disassembling it, identifying the damage on a car, looking within the database, understanding what they're seeing on the car versus what's in there, and then preparing these damage estimates has helped them to understand just one other small fraction of what this industry has to offer. So when it comes down to the funding aspect, with strong advisory committee involvement, shops are willing to supplement this and provide funding wherever they can to help the program stay stronger.
Am I allowed to make that comment even though it's just registered as a social media?
You earned it.
I think some of you guys have gotten emails and outreach over the last two years.
Just a couple.
No blame ratio for that.
I, I think the industry at large didn't realize the enrollment issue. When we go to an advisory committee, it's at night, we don't see the enrollment, we don't talk about it. We talk about technicians, we talk about industry, we talk about these topics. We don't see how many kids are in the classroom, but it's not top of mind to us in the industry. So not something we're asking about, not something we knew. So the way I look at this and observe it is a communication issue. Had we known, I think we would have jumped on this years ago and louder, and I wish our efforts weren't to the emails, they were to the kids. But you have our attention now.
So I said in just a little one or two weeks' time, the amount of attention this topic has kind of garnished is monumental, especially for our industry, where it's a very small, big group of people that, again, the key word here is passion. We all very passionately care about what we do. And if there was any prior awareness to this, we would have jumped on this bandwagon much sooner and provided whatever tools and support were needed to help really boost the enrollment numbers. And if there's consideration for keeping the program in place, you will see these efforts come in just as strongly as you did over the past nearly two weeks.
Just, um, two quick things. Uh, there's, there's a remarkable disconnect between the level of enthusiasm and emails and all that we've gotten, which we really appreciate. You know, it's, it's been very interesting. And the fact that the reality is, a lot of us around the table here have been at graduation, I think as recently as two years ago, handing out two diplomas to kids in this shop. And so there, and I, all of the points have been made about the aging workforce and the fact that there aren't important jobs and good jobs and more technologically advanced. All of that is, is well received, and yet somehow it isn't getting on to the next generation. I'm not even sure if it's getting on, and I, I don't know the answer to this, but whether it's getting on to the next generation within your field. We, it's not unusual, if you're around Shawshing or any comparable school, to find people who are second and third, fourth-generation carpenters and electricians and plumbers. It gets carried on. I don't know within your field if that is happening or not, because I have seen.
I'll tell you why, it's days of the old.
Uh, but the other school programs have booming, you know.
Well, the booming programs we was talking about in the past, and I know one thing, when I was graduating high school, I went to New England Tech in Rhode Island after high school. Gradually, I. Auto body at the time, being truthful and honest with everyone, there's nothing to hide here. Auto body, everyone associates it with the guy sanding, a guy painting next to him, they're smoking a cigarette, they're a dirty dingy disgusting area. I, I'm going to be the elephant in the room and say, that's what people associate. It's not how it is anymore, and education is key with that. Bringing the parents and showing the parents what we actually do on a daily basis, whether it's at our shops or in the room over here. Uh, truthfully, and the whole field has grown in so many different ways that the two people that run my office, the girl who runs my complete office, they're both females. They're able to, they're strong, they're passionate, they're able to control the room and control everything in the situation. A lot of people think that it's just a bunch of guys in a room that are just goofing around and it's disgusting. I'm just being honest, because that's what I grew up with, the same perception. You walk by a body shop, it's, it's uneducated, it's dirty, and the environment's terrible. Uh, it, it's education, showing what we actually do. We're using computers. Uh, the, the amount of body filler is down 75% compared to what it was 10 years ago. In 10 years, people are not just spreading fixing, so people know body filler is what's used to fix a ding and that. We're replacing panels now, we're using it properly. We're wearing protective gear. Uh, the chemicals, yes, most of them, some of them are still dangerous. Uh, that's why the school is so adamant on, and I understand, the fresh air system. Any decent shop offers that to their painters. Masks, gloves, it, it, at the end of the day, it's no different. If anything, it's healthier than some of the, working on septic system, being in a welding room, working in some machine facilities, working on some robots. It, it's healthier than that, just being honest now, whether you're in an office at a body shop or you're even all the way down to the paint line, which I did for 14 years.
We have open house next week, if you're.
Just found out about that.
Might be doing some recruiting, I infer, but, uh.
And everyone's not there, so I got elected just like tonight, so we'll see you there.
Two things. Um, first is a question and a comment. My contacts aren't what they should be. What's the pay scale for the collision industry?
It's a wide range.
It's a very wide range.
If you were to compare it to, to some of the other locations, I think that there's a misnomer. There's actually a really large robust opportunity for salaries, starting probably about $75,000 in the starting range, going up to 2, 250. Um, you know, if you're a painter, you can definitely make well over six figures. If you're a manager, you can make over six figures. If you're an industry, supply rep, tech rep, a lot of those come with company cars, phones, expense account, um, like clothing allowance, there's a lot of perks. Most of the businesses in our industry offer full benefits. Um, there's a lot of private equity being invested into collision, so there's a lot of really formal, like almost home depot style, like very formal businesses that offer kind of a robust compensation package. Um, and then insurance too, a lot of those professions, you have a car and office and laptop and a cell phone and things like that. So there's some perks even beyond the salary, but it's not hard to get to six figures quickly in a career.
Thank you. And I did want to let you guys know that the email list that was out on social media is not accurate. Uh, it's missing two people and had two people who acknowledge it's wrong, so.
Hope Ford will take care of it.
And we've been, we've been sharing it among ourselves. We've been sharing it among ourselves.
We only have like 10 days to put it together in our defense.
I completely understand, but just, you know.
So somebody had brought up the topic of continuing education within our industry, uh, as far as like different vessels for where you can go. So our governing body for what we do, so automotive has ASC, we have Icar, which is the inter-industry conference on auto collision repair. And for shops like myself, we are OEM certified, so we're certified by a handful of different mainstream manufacturers. In order for us to maintain these certifications, we have to maintain a certain level of training and education through our governing body. And every individual in the shop that holds what we call role rep has to maintain a certain level of training throughout the year. All of which I supply free of charge to all of my technicians. Because for us, it's, it's a selling factor. We have these OEM certifications, we're backed by numerous manufacturers, Honda, Acura, Subaru, McLaren, Ford. We've invested a great deal of time and money in having these certifications because of the pride and we take what we do. And so when it comes down to the continuing education, we want our technicians to equally take in that pride, not just technicians, everybody within the shop, whether it's the estimators, the managers, technicians. And we provide them this so that they can see what's current, what's new, and what they have to stay up on in order for us to stay current and ahead of the curve of what's coming down the pipeline in our industry. And as far as all the things that have been spoken, whether it's ADAS, which is advanced driver assist systems, various computer systems, there are so many different avenues for training that we need to maintain just to make sure that we're putting out a safe product along with our customers. But most mainstream shops that have a passion and they care, they're providing this education free of charge to their students. And they're doing so with a lot of pride.
The other thing too, I don't know if any research was done as far as the pay scale in the auto body collision world. One major issue we run into constantly is that we're done with like piece work. It's by the hour, uh, so you can get paid $21 an hour, but you can still log over 100 hours a week. That runs into a major tie-up that I've seen, like walking into the LinTech, uh, they had a signup. Start off at, uh, carpentry, you start at 60,000, electricians, 100,000. And at the bottom, they had bodyman 36,000, because they took the average flat rate hour and did it by 40 hours. Because you could only work 40 hours a week, although doing piece work, you can log in 140, 150, 200 hours a hour, 200 hours. A lot of statistic people and they, they don't look at that. They just look at the actual dollar number per hour. And that hurts our industry as well, because students walk in and they look at it and go, why am I going to go here and do this for 12, 20, 15 dollars an hour when they're making 50 dollars an hour? They don't realize that they're logging three, four times the amount of hours that you get paid. It depends on how you perform and you have to perform well.
Can you explain the piece work?
Yeah, absolutely, so. Yep, no, so.
Each piece of the car?
No, so like, let's say a car comes into one of our shops and, uh, I'll make it very small, it has a small dent on the side of the car. The dent is three hours. One of my best technicians, I guarantee, could have that dent repaired and ready for paint within one hour. So whether that takes him six hours or one hour, he gets paid the three hours. So if you can work efficient and, and not have any issues, because if he does it, it looks terrible, now it's on me as the business owner to pay him again, or it's on him to redo the entire job. And we're only going to pay that three hours, whether he spends six, 10, nine, 15 hours, it doesn't matter, we get paid the three. Uh, so you have to be efficient, you have to be skilled. And if you are efficient and skilled, like I said, my best guy, he could fix that dent in one hour.
But he gets paid for three.
He gets paid for three. So that's how it works. So i- it's one loophole around, uh, overtime and, and things of that nature. But, uh, just speaking of experience as a flat rate painter, which I was for 14 years, I averaged 164 hours a week. And when I went to close on my house, I was lost my house because they said, no, you only make this amount per hour, you can't work 160 hours a week. Oh, you suddenly pay subs, that's not how this works. And, and I've realized that more and more going down with statistics and working on this, that a lot of the schools are putting out numbers that show students what they can make, and they're just going to that hourly number, which is 18, 20, 25 dollars an hour. They're not telling you how many hours they can log if they're efficient.
It's all historical back.
Yeah, which, uh, just, but I was putting some of this together and I was adding up and counting every single body shop, there's AP guidelines. Everything I found, one of the things I came across, not to go off on a spiel, was that the average technician makes $22 an hour. I'm like, no, 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 it's, it's a flat rate. It's flat rate, they call it piece work.
So Patty, I actually have a question about curriculum. So who designs the curriculum for a, a particular program, like the auto collision and repair within the school? Is that?
There's state frameworks for every one of the programs.
Okay.
So DESE, but I believe yours follows Icar, if I'm.
Yeah.
We do that too.
Yeah, I got it.
So you're, so you're include, so what's included into the curriculum today in these programs is some of the, the latest work that's coming out? Okay.
Do you states share curriculums as far as, you know, within New England? And I asked that question because I have a fellow graduate from the tech school I graduated in who's worked at two different tech schools in Connecticut, both of which have had the highest enrollment numbers of any program within the school because of the curriculum models they're following. And they're putting real-world modern technologies in the shop, uh, real-world applications. Students are going to do when they go off the field. And it's not just collision repair. It goes off the detailing, it goes off to other cosmetic aspects of what we do. All of which we at Northeast have brought in different seminars and programs to show them, okay, listen, this is not just auto body. Where these branches go off, this is another facet that ties in that you can also pursue.
So the DESI's curriculum then is up to date in terms of all this? Okay, just check, just check it. Yes.
So as a student, obviously, um, I went through auto body and I felt like a two-year-old looking at bubbles for the first time. It was just, there was something there, there was something, oh my God, it was like sprinkles. I loved it. Do you guys think, like, looking at the open house on the 5th, there's a better way or more optimal way to showcase that the most important parts are the most well-rounded parts of the auto body curriculum here in our program?
And I say that, and I can't give you a specific example right now, but I can say with the group of people that have rallied in this past two weeks, we can 100% bring something into that open house that'll be visually appealing and give them a good idea on the various aspects of it. Showing the technology side of it is going to be a huge selling factor.
To boards, like, as a student, to boards, like, like information, how would you best receive information?
Me personally, I like reading. I know most, most kids don't, but, but when you see the colors and the, it draws your attention to it. So something like that is, I think it's really nice.
There's a few more pages of this, of more information.
I want to see that.
So just a few.
Just like.
Simple and colorful?
Oh, yeah. The signs that we have right now, I've worked with my shop and my teachers and my advisors, the signs that we have, they're like seven-foot signs that just have a bunch of colors and children's odds, and it's just visually appealing. And parents especially are just looking at numbers. Like they want to see what they can do. They want to go home and tell like their husband or their wife, hey, this is what our kid's going to do when he grows up. Like it's going to be, it's going to be amazing. So something like this, I think it's really important for the kids to see right up front in their face.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I think you touched upon, I think it's like an exposure, like, take out the example, like, some people reach out in Canada, like all these other trades, like carpentry, plumbing, or electrical, like, you know, we had a, certainly in Town Island, and there was like a shed that had to get redone. And those are the big ones, so that's huge exposure in Canada. So those are always like, people I talk to, like you said, it's, you know, I think it is probably some type of disconnect with, you know, people, like you said, especially in Canada, because like the, the if people are reaching out to get projects done and, you know, that's the thing that they're looking to get done. And that's why a lot of those other programs, you know, are always strong as far as like, because they get that exposure. So I think there is some disconnect as far as, like, I think as far as like getting the warm out maps. I think that would be, if you're seeing that success at Northeast, I think that's, that's a huge thing that hopefully we'll look at.
Yeah, community exposure too. Again, just take the collaborative mindset of these things, we play to harness that exposure. You know, one of our shops in Sawyer Suite had numerous car shows throughout the time that we've been open. And every year, it just grows and grows and grows with the level of exposure with social media. And it's won, we had over 250 cars there, and just to see people wanting to come see what we did. They're welcome into the shop, they're welcome to see the different vehicles we've worked on. And it really gained a lot of perspective and exposure.
Yeah, my father worked at Door, um, National High North when they opened that program, Autotech. They started a car show program there. Just spitballing one of the things we've talked about to get exposure of people in. Uh, just, just the web that Eric has alone. If we were able to and allowed to have a student-driven car show here, I, I can almost guarantee for the weather's good, a few hundred cars right off the bat, and that gets students talking. That gets kids interested. They get to come in, they get to see the finished product, they get to see some gorgeous cars. It, it gets me excited about something between the flyers, talking about it, the students do judging. It, it really helps. And it also helps raise the money. We talked about how much it costs to paint a car. That, that's a real-world number. It's, it's, it's not cheap material. As advisors and working with the teachers, if we're able to raise that money ourselves, that takes it off of the school for the product. For the products to put on these cars, I, I can almost guarantee we can do.
Sure you all want me to sit down now?
Thank you everyone.
Thank you very much.
Before we jump into this, this has been shared with all the committee members, but I know we have forty-five or fifty people in the cafeteria. And again, I know, uh, there was a couple of questions from the committee before this as well. So I do want to go through what we've pulled together on our end. I do want to start by saying, as a superintendent at a vocational school, the last thing I want to be doing is sitting here talking to people about what programs we want to close. Again, in a, in a perfect world, we'd never find ourselves here. We'd never, we'd never have to have this conversation. But as we went through this MSBA process, um, we've talked a lot about this. There's been multiple years of us working towards getting to this point. This is something that MSBA requires. And as we get deeper into this process, uh, MSBA is going to take a closer look at this. And again, if, if we decide to, um, support this broker something, we are going to have to document to MSBA that we have made some legitimate changes and that they've had a legitimate impact on this, or MSBA won't move our project forward. So the other piece that I do want to acknowledge, um, that I think has got lost in some of this conversation. There was a lot of time, energy, uh, and resources put into this by the leadership team. Those of you that have looked at the timeline, I mean, we kicked off August nineteenth. We did an in-depth analysis, uh, from student interest to workforce trends to future openings for twenty-four different programs. Before this final document was compiled. So I do want to go on the record and thank, um, Jessica, our principal. Danica Johnston, our academic director, and Mike Hurley, our vocational director. They did a ton of work between the end of August and the end of September to pull all of this stuff together. The first thing I, I, I want to acknowledge is, um, we did not see any issues with industry demand. And I know, um, I've seen some of the social media stuff. I've had some things shared with me. I've seen some of the emails that have been passed around. That was never our contention. We understand, we realize that when we dug into this, we looked at the mass hire data, there is absolutely a need for this industry. We understand that, w- we get that. Um, but then we also kind of had to take a look at, as a school, what can we support from a staffing standpoint? Because if we want to add two more programs, that's more staff members, that's more materials, it's more contracted services, it's more technology, it's all of those things. So we are trying to be, um, good fiscal stewards of money that we're, that's in our operating budget. Plus what we're going to potentially ask for as part of a building project. So, um, we absolutely agree with that. I don't think anybody from our team thought that there was any issue with the industry demand around this. One of the things that we heard early on was, uh, student to teacher ratios. So we did do a dive here. I think we looked at eleven other schools. Um, and again, this does not include PERS. And, and, you know, we heard, we heard from the auto, uh, the auto collision instructors earlier. We do have somebody that's down there helping all of exploratory. I know some of the other schools, I know Whittier has a para. I'm not sure about some of the other ones. We are significantly below. We have fourteen students in that program this year between grades ten, eleven, and twelve. So we have a seven to one student to teacher ratio at this point. The next closest one I could find was Franklin County. And Franklin County just added a third teacher this year and has plans to ramp up their enrollment over the next couple of years as they kind of grow into having a third instructor. But you can see there's some numbers here. I mean, uh, Assabit Valley is as high as twenty-five, uh, students per instructor. You know, and again, some of those fall in that thirteen or fourteen students per instructor range. And again, as we reached out, I, I heard Monty Tech had a very successful program. I've heard Upper Cape Tech is a very successful program. Northeast has, has kind of revitalized or regrown their program as well. So there are some models out there that, that have worked. In going through this, we also took a look, I asked our admissions team to give us, to give me, to give the school committee some comparisons. You know, what, what is going on here? What have we seen? What are the trends? So we went back five years. So the class of twenty twenty-nine would be this year's freshman. Um, and then you, you know, we, again, we kind of work our way back. Um, we did add an extra year here because we do have freshmen. That have already indicated their application choices. So when we look across this, you know, auto collision has ten, a dozen, sometimes, you know, sometimes less, sometimes more students. Which is in line with some of our other programs. And they randomly chose to include auto technology, health assisting, and plumbing. So we are seeing when students apply, interest in the auto collision program. That's something that we were able to document, we were able to pull out of the information that we reviewed as part of this. Next thing we looked at was students going through there. And again, Mr. Rupucci had shared earlier that that number has been cut down in recent years. Like you said, that was, that was before I got here. But in looking at this, we have usually somewhere between a hundred and sixty and two hundred students that explore auto collision. So again, it's not probably the, uh, most popular one. You know, we, we look at some of the numbers for the other programs, it's closer to two eighty. The two sixty range, depending upon which year it is here or there. But there are definitely kids that are opting to go through that program. They're applying here, saying they're interested in it. They're going through, they're exploring it. They're looking at that. They're considering all their options. They're looking at, at that as one of their, uh, potential career choices. When we get the final selection numbers, and I did this as an average over the last five years because, uh, it was, it, it got a little, got a little busy when I tried to put all the numbers in the chart. At the end of exploratory, the average of first choices, choice number one, one point four for the last five years. Now again, how's that compare to others? You can look across that chart. Autotech is sixteen point two, health assisting is eighteen point two, and plumbing is thirty-three point six. Again, continued down with the numbers. Yep, there's, it ticks up for second choices, ticks up again for third choices. But I think if we look at the total number of stu-, the average number of students placed in those programs, five students. That's right in line with what we're seeing this year. We have fourteen kids across three grade levels. That's, that's very similar to the numbers we've seen historically and consistently across the program. If we look at program enrollment, um, again, this, these are last year's numbers. For twenty twenty-five, we do have fourteen, as I said. Last year there was nineteen students in auto collision. Year before that was sixteen, then it was twelve, ten, and twelve. When you compare that to the, um, comparison programs there, you can see that there's, there's a big difference. In twenty twenty-four, we had sixty-eight students in automotive. We had fifty-nine in health assisting. We had seventy-seven in plumbing. So, and then also the school enrollment, grades ten through twelve is that bottom number. So out of nine hundred and sixty-six kids, nineteen of them were enrolled in auto collision. So the, these are patterns, these are trends. This is what we looked at. We did a dive on all of our, all of our technical programs and looked at all of this stuff as part of our MSBA, uh, review. We've heard a lot about supporting local businesses and co-op placement and how those students are essential to building the workforce. Twenty twenty-five, we have five kids out, four students, and then two, two, and two. Again, if you look at the other programs, there's obviously, um, more students participating. We're putting more students to work in those particular career areas. Again, this is a, another thing that we looked at across trends and numbers and enrollment. The last piece that we looked at, so anywhere from twelve to eighteen months after graduation, we are required by the state to do, uh, graduate, uh, follow-up surveys. And again, that information is, uh, collected. It, it, we also have to report it as part of our Perkins, um, filing with the federal government and everything as well. It is a little behind because again, they wait twelve to eighteen months to do the survey, then they collect all the data, then they release it. So the most recent, um, information that's in the system is the class of twenty twenty-two. So we are a couple of years behind. But again, looking at this, um, in twenty twenty-two, we had three hundred and seventeen graduates from Shawshine. And as Mr. O'Donnell had indicated earlier, two of those happen to be from auto collision. You can see the numbers as you go across in two thousand seventeen, you know, there was ten. That was the big group out of, out of that program. So we've had twenty-six students graduate from auto collision in the last five years. As compared to a hundred and one from Autotech, a hundred and twenty-three from Health, and ninety from Plumbing. Yes, Mr. Fury?
Yeah.
Can you go back a slide from that?
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, so these are the kids out on co-op, right?
Yep.
You're saying, so, like, use five in collision. What's the percentages there? Because obviously there's a lot less kids. So I'm looking at that as if they had more kids, they don't, they would, they have a good chance of getting jobs. And I'm just like, reading it right, or am I, so it's, it's, you know, it's only five, but it's a good, a high percentage of trade.
It could be, it could be seventy, or seventy-five percent of the program.
Right. So, so I, you know, that, and the only other question I have on this, like, help assistance. I can see the other two that kind of throws off from like the traditional, like, why didn't you, like, if you're going to do help, why didn't you choose maybe culinary or business tech? What made you go with helpless?
I told the admissions people to pick three. Those are the three they picked.
So you're blaming them.
I'm not, I'm not blaming them. I just said, they asked me the same thing. They're like, which three should we target?
I'm just checking them, why that, so if you have a center for that.
No.
You know, we're just saying, oh, those are the two, you know, one more program. Okay, thank you.
Could you just explain the row that says seventy-four?
Yes.
Are you about to sign that?
Yep, I was, I was going to touch base on that. So as part of this grad follow-up survey, um, there's things we have to, we have to report. Is, is the student going on to college? Um, is it considered, considered a pro-, a positive placement under Perkins? Perkins has much wider latitude as to what they consider a positive placement. Essentially, if a kid leaves here and goes to work full-time or goes to school, it's considered positive under Perkins. Chapter seventy-four is stricter. So those ones that say seventy-four next to them, in order to be considered a positive placement under chapter seventy-four, the student has to be employed in a directly related position within the field or attending post-secondary education that directly ties to that career area. So when we look at, we had two students graduate in that particular area. None of them were actually working in something directly related to auto body or going to school for it. We look at twenty twenty-one, we had five graduates. Three of them were working in that trade or going to school for something like that. And again, you can see as you go across. So again, um, looking over the last five years, we've had fifteen students that are considered a positive placement under chapter seventy-four. Now again, this is one snapshot in time. This is, again, the twelve to eighteen month window. There are kids that could have gone to work in that career field after that, that survey window. There's kids that could have left that career field right after the survey window. But that's really the only data point that we have that captures something after the students graduate.
Yeah, the survey. Does everybody respond to the survey?
No.
That's why I thought, okay.
If, if we get seventy or seventy-five percent, we're doing well. Next slide, um, I, I did, again, this is kind of what led us to this conversation here tonight, I believe. In looking at the twenty twenty-five school year, uh, we're going to spend two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars on that program. Again, salaries, tools, contracted services, et cetera. Fourteen students now. Again, we will probably have more ninth graders in there. We won't know how many ninth graders are in the program till after exploratory ends. But for the, you know, for the, for the sake of argument, you take that dollar figure, you divide by fourteen, uh, that works out to just over eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars per student. That is just for the shop piece of this. That doesn't include transportation. It doesn't include academic teachers. It doesn't include anything besides the vocational part of the education for these students. Now, um, there were some questions from some, some committee members. What is this impact or what does this look like if we move forward with this in a building project? I reached out to superintendent from Northeast, the superintendent from Tri-County. I got estimates that in, in today's prices in twenty twenty-five, it's, it's between eight hundred and fifty and a thousand dollars per square foot to build a new school. Northeast told me that it, it's actually probably a little bit higher than that, but again, that's what their kind of basis is for planning these projects and what MSBA has been telling you. So if you look up the recommended square footage per student under the state chapter seventy-four guidelines, it's two hundred and seventy-five square feet per student in the shop area. That doesn't include locker rooms. It doesn't include storage. It doesn't include a tool crib. It doesn't include any of that stuff. So again, calculations are based on six thousand, six hundred square feet. That would have twelve students in each grade level. Again, if we're looking at increasing the capacity of this program, you want to go fifteen and fifteen for a total of thirty kids. That number's obviously going to climb. Based on that square footage, depending on which end of that per square foot range you go on, we're looking at five million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars to six hundred and, uh, six million, six hundred thousand dollars. Just walls, ceiling, floors, um, that doesn't include equipment. So again, the spray booth that we just spent half a million dollars on, um, we may be able to move into a new building. Uh, we'd have to do some feasibility around that. Doesn't include frame machine, lifts, um, any of that other stuff. So those, those costs are in addition to that. So again, as we move forward with this MSBA project, I think we've all had conversations about the level of scrutiny we're going to get and the justifications we're going to be asked for from our sending community. So if the committee desires to, to move forward with this and keep this program, that's fine. We want everybody to be informed about what that looks like, what those potential costs could be. And again, I, I will say this again, um, and I'm, I'm not trying to shirk responsibility. This is absolutely the committee's decision as to where you want to go. I look at my role and the role of the leadership team to gather the information, to share it with everybody and say, this is what we found. Here's the numbers. Here's the data. Let's ask questions about it. Let's look at it and then let's make an informed decision. One thing I did hear about, um, through social media, some of the news outlets, um, was the timeframe on this. And I just, I just want to say, um, we were working under a very tight time constraint. But if you go right down through this, so August first, our eligibility window opened. August nineteenth was our kickoff meeting with MSBA. By September thirtieth, um, the draft documents have been completed by the leadership team. Again, we, I talked about that a little bit earlier. That was a lot of time and energy that went into that. October second, we met with the auto collision instructors and the department chair to tell them what we had found and what the recommendation in the report was going to be. That was, I believe, a Thursday. Uh, the following Tuesday, um, the curriculum subcommittee reviewed, um, and decided to move this to the full committee. On the ninth, we met with the two instructors and the department chair again to, again, keep them informed, let them know what was going on, uh, what, what had been recommended and what was going to happen. Uh, on the sixteenth, uh, myself and the, and the vocational director met with the advisory committee. And again, talked about tonight's meeting, um, what was going to happen, what they could do, how to advocate for the program. We went through all of those things. Obviously tonight, uh, the, the committee needs to review and vote upon this. And this has to be in by Thursday. We have a lot of really tight turnaround times with MSBA. I think it's actually a test. They want to see if we can complete this stuff within the window that they give us. It's, it's kind of almost a, uh, an entrance exam, if you will, um, to see if as a district, we can get this stuff done and submitted to them, uh, within the time windows that they give us. The last thing, oh, no, next to the last, I have two more. Oh, Terry, did you have a question?
No, I'm going to.
The other piece that I did want to address is, um, again, and, and we, we heard it again tonight and, and, uh, I get it. Advisory board meetings don't necessarily always focus on enrollment numbers and other things like that. But we did go back. You can see, back even in two thousand and eighteen, there was recommendations to hold a career field, a career fair, have guest speakers come in, do all of these things. We have probably seven or eight years of recommendations at advisory committee meetings about things to do to address some of the enrollment issues, some of the, um, outward facing perception of this career area, to inform parents about it, to inform kids about it. Again, um, some stuff was implemented, some stuff might not have been implemented. But again, you know, there's multiple recommendations here. I also, um, met with our previous vocational director. He was in last week for something else and we had a conversation. He shared with me that he annually sat down with the instructors in the program and talked about their enrollment numbers, talked about strategies to improve those things. So as a district, we have been looking at this. We have been having those conversations. It hasn't translated to more kids. You know, that, that doesn't mean that that's not going to be the case moving forward, but there is quite a history of us trying to do things, to bring attention to this and, and try to, try to make things better. I believe the last slide I have. Um, I believe the last slide I have is, one of the other things that I read in the press was that the district has, has, has had a lack of support for this program. Um, you go back to two thousand and nineteen, you can see, we bought a, we bought a welding table for the program, we bought a spot welder, uh, we upgraded all the lighting in the shop area. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, all new textbooks were purchased to align this with the I-CAR curriculum that our industry representative discussed earlier. Um, we bought a virtual spray painting simulator. Um, and those of you that have been here for open house may have seen that, it's, it's actually like a VR goggles and you actually get the paint and it tells you if you did a good job or if, if you should find it on the career. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, you know, the new, the new spray booth installation was complete. It was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was, that was a sizable investment. And yes, some of it was grant money. Um, actually, Mr. Rapucci and I, um, went to the grant award at, at Minuteman, I believe. It might have been one of the first things I did once I started here as new superintendent. Um, and then again, you know, we've, we've heard the advocacy for, uh, somebody that may have a little bit more auto collision background, but we have had a paraprofessional down there since December of two thousand and twenty-three, um, supporting with the ninth grade piece of that on those exploratory weeks. So, let's go listen to the beginning of the video.
Mine's mostly an MSBA question.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that MSBA wants to see that you have a plan for, to be blunt, under producing programs. And, but is what we put in this document the word of God? In other words, if we decide, you know, that we need to say, we'll cut the program to move the whole project forward. But meanwhile, because let's be realistic, we're not getting any money and we're not building a school for years, I mean, we're probably five years away.
Sixty years, yeah.
So we say, this is gonna be a recommendation. Meanwhile, the great people behind us rally. They come to open house, they help us get more experienced professionals, they put in some of their own money, and they're able to turn the program around. I fully believe you can. I mean, you guys are all of this, you, you put them, you, you put the time, the effort, the money in, and you turn the program around. Can we then, and meanwhile, we're moving forward and we get accepted by MSBA? Can we at that point say, look, we fixed auto body. Look at the improvements that we've made, look at the enrollment numbers, look at the postgraduate data, et cetera, the co-op numbers, et cetera. We want to recon, we want to reconsider closing that program. Is that, those of you who have done MSBA programs before, is that an option?
So I did some research around that. Um, and yes, so at the end of feasibility, when you get to preferred schematic design, everything has to be finalized. But there is an opportunity, there's a, there's a small window in there, so it's, it's not like we're gonna have six or eight months to talk about this. But there is a window in there, at the end of feasibility, when they stack to do, um, they'll give us three or four, here's three or four renovation options, here's three or four renovation expansion options, here's three or four new building options. And at that point, the building committee will have to go through those and, and decide what's the best path. Before that decision is made, before those final options are presented, there is an opportunity to make some adjustments to think. Again, if we miss something on an academic programming side, or we realize, oh crap, we need ten science labs instead of eight science labs, um, there is a little window in there for that.
And ballpark, when is that end of feasibility? Is that a year from now, is that two years from now?
I believe that's usually about eighteen months.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the document in front of me.
Twenty, ten twenty, I think it's July of twenty-seven.
July of twenty-seven is what they're targeting? Yeah.
Twenty, I think it's July.
Can I just mention something? Because you said there is a small window and you might, and you can make changes. That's a huge change.
Yep.
Yeah.
I.
So now you're talking about a feasibility, feasibility study that said, okay, this is what we say it's gonna cost. Now you're saying, well, no, we want to put auto body, body back in. They're gonna have to change their numbers. Or what if we went the other way?
We'd have to do it in the end of feasibility, we'd have to do it in the end of feasibility before they go.
Put it in there.
Yeah.
Why don't we do the opposite?
I was saying, what, what if we did the other? We said, we want to leave it in.
Right.
But, and, and in our, in our documentation of why are you leaving in a program that has fifteen students? And I, our wording would be, we have gotten a commitment from the people behind us.
You, I mean, I would say you run the risk of when you're meeting with, MSBA's board has to approve to, uh, move everything forward in every step in this. Now, if we have a place at the table and we have time to explain that, that's one conversation. Um, the other thing that could happen is the board could review that and say, we don't agree with your plan, um, you're out.
Okay.
That's it.
Would they literally say you're out?
Would they, would they come back to us?
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I.
I've never, I've never done, well, again, maybe that is a little harsh, but at some point in time, whether you like it or not, they're the ones that control the cookie pot.
Yeah, um. So Tony, have you ever seen or heard of them denying any of the people who've gone forward for these things?
Uh, around enrollment numbers, I have. Um, I know Northeast originally had a plan, I want to see the building, building for like seventeen fifty-ish, something like that.
Yeah, we, this, uh, I, we went through this, because like I said, I've been on the committee in Northeast for over ten years. Basically, we were given eighteen months to turn the program around, and it was kind of not so much written in stone, to be honest with you. Whether the program would stay or go, it's a lot harder to add the program back to the school than to take it away. Um, one way to design it is, the way that it is put into the program is you take two of your larger programs, put them on the opposite sides of it. But auto body, which I, I would rather change it to collision repair because just, that's another story. Put it, put it in the middle. And if the numbers don't work out, your two larger ones, you just dissolve that, and then they get the square footage on the two other. Because what you're gonna have to do is if you take us out and then go and put us back in, now you have to go to plumbing, a carpet, and say, you're losing this amount of square footage, and we have to try to figure out like building a house, where we're gonna put an extra bedroom. That's basically what you're running into. And now you have not just us up here, you have a plumbing committee down there, or, you know, I don't know how many emails you want, that's up to you, but you're gonna have a lot more committees pushing back for more. It's, it's a lot easier to, to take it away than to add it.
Again, just for a full disclosure, when I met with the advisory committee, I said, we get, we get two ends of the spectrum here. We have, you know, the committee can come back and say, you know, we're moving forward with this, you know, this is, this is what we want to do, full speed ahead, damn the torpedoes kind of mentality. Or I mean, the other end of it could be, hey, let's talk about, you know, is this, is this viable long-term? You know, and I, I think I told you, I think we're probably gonna end up somewhere in the middle, is my estimation.
Yeah, as far as, like you said, to answer, oh, no. I've done some research, have, have a conversation, emails with you and, and other people, and, um, and I was thinking, if, from listening to everything, probably better leave it in and then take it out later. And I think going forward from talking to other people, if like down the road in a year or so, or two years, maybe two freshman cycles, um, that if the numbers aren't up, MSBA, instead of just saying, if you're out, I think they would just say, listen, you gotta cut that program. I don't think we'd lose the whole thing because of it. But like, you know, you never know, one hundred percent. Can't be sure. I do have another question, or, or from looking at the different data and the way you put the new shops together, the new twenty, you merged several of them. We merged one. You only merged one.
Desi and, I'm not Desi, DMC and, yeah, yeah.
I think you did.
DMC and graphics.
All right, so.
And that's because Desi's telling us.
Maybe because I have this document ahead, I took the pathway program and maybe I read it wrong. But I did this, and I took it from like, which one, I'm trying to get the right, one here, because it may go wrong at one time. Um.
This one, Sarah.
This is the one?
Is this the, uh, no, not the chapter. I don't have the chapter. Education, I do have the document. So in the educational profile, page thirteen, I tried to cut on twelve. I tried to compare what was in this document with Desi on page twelve, in chapter seventy space. With, with this other document, the pathway program enrollment data?
Yep.
Then there's twenty programs there, and the way I was reading what is on page twelve, you merge business tech, maybe they're already together and I just don't know, don't realize it. Business tech with hospitality. I got culinary arts with, no, culinary arts with, I got two in here. Business tech.
The list I have.
With marketing, business tech and marketing.
Yes, those have always been combined.
Okay, yes. And hospitality and.
Culinary, that's been combined.
Okay, and then you got electronics and engineering.
Have always been combined.
Those are combined, you'll get, because I'm showing treats that they're different. You're on two different lines, why are they on two different lines? I'm on this, I don't know.
That's, I think the way they're calling it.
I think it's the way they're reporting it.
Yeah.
So that's what got me all confused. So you're saying you only merged the one?
Yeah.
All right, I'm.
Yes, and as, as Taryn had brought up, um, so the state has changed the framework. There, there was a, there was a standalone design in visual communications, it was a standalone graphics. About, let's say, a year ago now, uh, Department of Ed made, it made the executive decision to merge those two together. So it's now graphic communications and visual design. So again, as we look at building out a new space, um, and, and that was also another program that we met with all the instructors and said, hey, um, you know, you're, you all know that this change had happened, looking at moving into a new building, what makes sense? How do we bring these two programs together? But also, you know, kind of maintain, they're, they're, they're kind of unique. Our DMC kids are, are typically more artistic, um, you know, a, a lot of them going to art school, you know, want to do more of the design, um, uh, the visual arts piece of it, if you will. And a lot of our graphic students are more on the production side, like how do you take those designs and make posters and banners and t-shirts and, and apparel and stuff like that? So, um, we've already started to have that conversation as well.
I bring that out, you know, conceivable to, to put automotive, auto collision. Is that, is that even conceivable?
I did ask that.
That's another question, merge them together like you merging others, is it, I don't.
I mean, the feedback we heard from the advisory committee was they're too, too very distinct.
They were no better than me. I know, they're definitely, you know, it's totally different, but if you have enough space, could go, different teachers. That's just like, I'm just thinking of different ideas, that was one of them, you know, trying to figure out different options.
You know, and I'd like everybody to realize that we were actually, and it came to us, we didn't know this was happening until the seventh or, you know. We had no idea that this was happening. We didn't, because we're not involved with his team, you know? We're his, we're his monthly team, but we're not involved with his daily team. And we're not supposed to be, right? So, and actually, when I heard it, I, I am on the curriculum subcommittee, but unfortunately, I couldn't make that meeting. So he was explaining to me, and I will tell you, I am not for it. I mean, I am not, I do not want to take it away. I don't want to take anything away from students. And you look at the numbers and, all right, so there's five. So what are those five gonna do? You know, I mean, and then you hope you can build it up. I mean, I, I'm hoping it can be built up, and I, you know, I said that to you. I said, well, what are their ideas? Can we build it up? You know, but if you look at when he was saying, you know, that, well, they did try things. I'm reading out notice of low enrollment, it doesn't look like they ever tried anything. I read it said, they, it was packed minutes, mentioned low enrollment issues, no suggestion. And that's written a few times.
But I think maybe twenty twenty-three, there were some suggestions that were followed.
Yes, because then enrollment.
And then the next year, the enrollment went down, right? But then the next year went down.
Right, and it said, they, they never figured out how to sustain that, so.
Did leadership ever come down to the advisory meeting and verbally speak to the committee? Because I think we have committee members downstairs that are saying they weren't aware.
That I don't know.
So I, I think from an advisory committee, we were like, what?
My, I didn't know. I'm sorry. Looking at the graduate follow-up, um, I'm not known for my math skills off the top of my head, sorry for the grammar. But the percentages aren't terrible for auto tech, auto collision versus some of the other shops. Um, so the kids who were going into it, you know, seemed to be sticking with it, similar to the other shops. I am wondering, the current proposal is expand four shops, add two shops, combine two shops, and eliminate one. Is it all or nothing? That what we have to put on this form? Because I would like the idea that we've heard of keep it in with marching orders to the shop, to the advisory committee. I, I, I checked, September twenty-five to March twenty-two, seven is nineteen months. So you have nineteen months to turn things around. That's like, somebody said, two freshman cycles. We're happy to, you know, let us know how we can help. You put in your time, you put in your money, we put in our time, you know, we'll work together, I'm, we're not abandoning you to this. But like this gentleman said, have a plan for if we are not able to turn it around. The space will be absorbed by these other two spaces, because easier to re-shingle than to add. I like that idea, and I realize that's not what's in the original proposal. So can we break up the proposal and?
So we are also subject to MSA, MSBA's enrollment projection. That meeting hasn't take place, and I was told it wouldn't take place till January. So this is what we, this is, this is our, this is our leadership team, this is our administration and, and staff looking at this and seeing, these are the things we recommend. MSBA could take a hatchet to that thing in January and say, your new building's gonna be eleven hundred kids. And then that whole list is out the window. Um, because then, you know, we're not, we're not expanding anything, we're not adding new programs. Um, you know, we, we may be looking at reducing the enrollment in what we already have. Um, I don't foresee that happening. I do know Northeast, like I said, Northeast's experience was when they did their original viability document, I think it was, I want to say seventeen hundred fifty, eighteen hundred kid target, and I think that new school's fourteen hundred.
They, they, they got cut down, and that's, that's initially what made me speak up is my fear is if the school already is cutting down on programs, there's no way in heck that they're gonna be adding one or bringing one back in just because their numbers went up. That's why it's, it's vital if this gets chopped tonight, no matter how good we get the program to go, it's gonna be an extra one possible to add. And it's just the square footage, I mean, going back to numbers. The kids that graduate, if it shows how many are still in the program after they graduated, like we said, this is a whole web. So if someone left here and went to work for a sign company painting signs, are you still in collision repair? No, I'm at a sign company. You're a zero, you're not there. And, and that's one thing that hurts, our numbers, but, um, not to go off, that's subject to the question, but yeah, it's, it's, the square footage, it, it hurts. Um, our, our shop at Northeast is, is gonna be about half to two-thirds the size of what it is now, and, and shrinking going from two booths to one. It, it, it's gonna hurt, uh, what we need to do things like what, what Rachel implemented when I, but my shop was utilizing every square footage, because as you showed, you pay for the square footage piece thing. That's why one of the, my understanding, uh, what worked with the teachers was when they installed the cross-draft paint booth that they did. They did that specifically with a dry system, everything can be transported in case there is a new school. Uh, because at four hundred fifty thousand dollars, if you went to a modern day one, compared to what it costs to go into a school, you, you're probably looking at six hundred thousand to install a lesser booth than that in today's numbers. But to move one over, it still beats all of those, all the standards that you need to, especially with the, uh, fire suppression system that's in that and the fresh air systems that, uh, you guys added when you put it in. So that, that's one thing that helps save quite a bit there. Um, but yeah, like I said, the square footage is, i- it's a bit of a killer. Um, but if the numbers stay a little bit stronger, you'll have enough room for the kids that are in there.
Yeah, so we, we may be back having a conversation about prioritizing, you know, do we actually expand programs? Do we add programs? Um, what does that look like?
Tony, how long have these guys, I'm ready to answer, how long have they been our advisors for this program? How long have you guys been advisors for this program?
Uh, going to actual meetings, being truthful, the, the last one was one of my first, uh, between opening my shop, I had four kids and post multiple things in at the Northeast. And I was helping at Essex, uh, Essex watching that program open and it closed was like devastating. I don't know if anyone ever saw that, that is, that was one of the most gorgeous body shops. If you could speak poetically about a body shop I've ever seen in my life. And walking in and seeing no students in a closing was just eye-opening. Uh, but I, I, I've been, I've been working with the teachers since my shop opened, you know, six years now, uh, staying in constant contact. Uh, like, like I said, it's crazy seeing the numbers that low, because I feel like I must have had more than half your students on co-op.
Yeah, he has had several of his students.
And I've, I've had four, five of your students since I opened.
Yeah.
CJ downstairs has been on for at least five or more years, right?
Yeah, we have several here tonight. Um, it, it just comes down to availability, uh, or running late, not maybe getting out of work in some year. Um, so, you know, having timeline to get here, running a shop is one difficult, but several advisors are actually in. If they're still here in the cafeteria.
I've been on one year since twenty fifteen, and Claire Lawrence on the law.
I think my concern is just having that support.
Well, I'm committed, I know all of us are committed. I, I've been very active with it here for, for daddy at this point, and happy to commit to this school as well. I, I wish I had known, I, I really do, if I had known MSBA, I would have been more involved.
Y'all feel like we didn't know.
I think one of the charts Tony put up was pretty glaring, like you had like twenty-five, like with MNC shut, so there's clearly some type of disconnect.
There's disconnect, because I don't think that.
And I, I think everybody's understand with, not to, Tony touched on it, I mean, from even though the K through twelve school, like you're on, if you're in MSBA's dime, like you're basically like, like I agree with Patty, I don't, I'm not agreeing with cutting any programs. There's something you can do to, to expand and say, like you said, Northeast was a way to do it, but you also have to factor in the MSBA piece, which, like to your point, you, you propose something, and even if you do have that, they could chop it basically, so it's basically that for people to realize that you're, you're basically, because you're conceding, like if the school's four hundred million, they reimburse it fifty percent, you're basically beholden to their. You're basically beholden to their, the way they do. So that's another piece that's, you know, a difficult thing that people, if people do say, we'll do our best to advocate and, and grow and all that. You're still at the mercy of what the state dictates. Like, you're on their, their timeline or their, their dime, but they dictate it.
You brought, you brought Minn C's back and you show us this. You got the shop, you're still in this place.
Everyone, everyone in the whole school did, and it's crazy, because you know what everyone, you know, everyone pays for taxes. There's more people, each year, there's more people on the consensus, and we're shrinking the school. Kind of mind blowing to me. I understand it's a dollar and cents, you know, figure, especially for a technical school with so many towns involved. But you have more students that are gonna be applying than ever, and we're making it smaller than it was. It's, that's a different discussion, I guess, though, because that goes across the board for all these programs. And it's gonna look great on paper saying, we have this many kids waiting to get in the program. Well, yeah, because you let in half the kids you did last year. It's, it, it kind of hurts all around.
You know, I find it very interesting that they would cut, because we, they've been telling us, you know, we've gotta accept more students. You gotta do this, we gotta do something in Massachusetts, and it's like, okay.
I mean, the perfect example is, is the new building in Minuteman.
I mean, much smaller.
Seven fifty. And they had outgrown it before the, before the facility was finished.
I mean, it's, it's crazy. It's like, do you really support technical education or not? And if you do, we either need newer schools, I mean, not, not only our schools, that we need extra schools. Love the state.
I mean, I can say for Burlington, it's above Bedford, but this was the first year we actually had a waitlist. And I told a selectman, well, two selectmen in Burlington, basically, it's like people, sorry. But basically, the, the way is because it's, you need a, a more, a bigger school. And then the, the, the problem is this lottery puts another stress on, you're basically, the state has been. Like, basically, these guys have been put under pressure for even that, not to change topics, but that's another, you know.
Another agenda.
Another agenda, yeah. But that's another stressor to basically deal with. Is, is dealing with that whole thing.
That's not what we can do anything about. We need to make our decision tonight.
Now that we have the data, that we've, you know, we've been reminded of the data, the numbers have been there. And we've all experienced it, and maybe we should have been more aware of it. A lot of people should have been. But the reality is now, in terms of both the accuracy and the integrity of what we're submitting to the MSBA. It would seem, to me at least. Just ingenuous for us to send, send them a document and say, yeah, we just want to continue all the programs we have, because everything's fine. Everything is not fine with respect to this specific program. The kid, the kids have, and their families to some extent have voted with their feet. Now perhaps they were ill-informed or inadequately informed or. All of these things are possible, but I, so I think, gonna make a distinction between trying to save the program, which would be wonderful. And I do think that there's some flexibility in the schematic design phase. That's a matter of playing with some, uh, some numbers on a, on a keyboard at the designer's office, um, to move things around. And let's remember, it's all a zero-sum game. Because there's a certain number of kids that they're gonna go for. And if another twenty kids a year go over to auto body, which might be wonderful, that'd be probably five of them aren't going to electrical and five of them aren't going to carpentry. And funny, it's a zero-sum game. And I don't know which way the kids are gonna go. But I think for us to submit something to MSBA and say, oh yeah, we plan on keeping everything, even the programs that have been on a steady decline and that our students don't appear to be choosing, would be the wrong choice. Um, I think the integ, you know, it's taken us a long time to even get here with the MSBA process. I think we need to show them where we're at right now, which is if we had to build, the, build, a new building today or a renovated building, this is probably, this would be the choices we would make. If, unless the committee says, oh no, we would just choose to keep everything the way, and I don't think we can say that with, in good faith right now. So I, I would personally prefer to see us make that known to MSBA, but I, like many of the people here, would all be glad to be working towards an upswing in that program and have the situation to go back to the MSBA and say, we need to make an adjustment. We already know on, for our particular school project, that we're gonna be facing issues about what MSBA will pay for and what they won't pay for. It's in the wonderful set of documents that Jess and her team put together, um, that one of the things we'd like to do is keep the pool. We're gonna say that most likely, but we know MSBA's not gonna pay for it. And if MSBA said, boy, you guys, you know, we said at the last minute or in the, the, um, fa, schematic design phase, we'd like to add back in auto collision. They might say, alright, you can have it, we won't pay for it. But if you guys can collect the hat and put in four, five, six million dollars, I mean, I'm not being facetious. That's the way MSBA is. They can, they will be flexible up to a point, and then there's a point at which they say, we're not paying. We will pay for this under these circumstances, and I feel fairly confident if we show, once they see these numbers, they're gonna say, why are you ignoring that reality?
So you think that they'll just say, forget you, they won't come back and say this is a problem? And then we could possibly take it up at that point?
They, they might, they might. I guess, uh, Stacy, one of the things I'm thinking is, you know, to, to sort of honor the work that our, the administrative folks have put together that says, we've looked at all of our programs, and if we have to make some decisions. And, and I think we, I mean, one thing we need, I think Tony alluded to this, but maybe it needs to be clear. We have a commitment to all of the kids that are in that program right now. Kids will go into that explo, in that exploratory and for the, for the, they are, for the balance of this year.
You want me to clarify?
Yeah, clarify.
Yeah. If, if, if there is a decision to disband that program, any student that's currently enrolled in it has the legal right to complete the program. Because we've started exploratory this year and we've had kids go through there, any student that chooses that program at the end of this exploratory also has the right to finish that program. So, I mean, you're looking at, again, let's say, six kids, ten kids pick it this year. We'd have ten sophomores next year. We would do away with exploring. Again, this is all theoretical. Please, don't, I don't want to get crucified in saying that this is our plan. If, if that is a decision that the committee makes, then the class of twenty thirty, which will be next year's freshman, would not have that as an exploratory option. And then that program would slowly, as each grade level graduated out, that program would slowly work students out of it. And then, um, the class of twenty twenty-nine would be the last group of students to graduate from that program. People have pointed out, some of you have been around, some of you have heard this. Well, the superintendent Lyons did something very similar back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven with the diesel program.
Different problem.
Different problem, okay. It was my understanding at the time that that also wasn't a popular suggestion, but, um, that allowed us to build that health wing, which has opened up, you know, three programs and, and allowed, allowed more enrollment in, in health, dental, and medical assisting.
Problem with that is the kids that we graduated could not work.
In that industry.
In a diesel shop.
Okay.
Because they were too young.
Okay. But again, there is a history of that. I mean, and they did the same thing. They slowly phased the program.
And that's what I was gonna say. I've only done this once, and it was a real good reason for that, yes.
I, I understand what you're saying, Brian, but I'm not saying to keep everything the way it is, but just add it, show that we know there's low numbers. We're showing you the data that we know is low, but we're, we're hoping that it comes up. And like it says, at the end of the day, and twenty, if it, if say they decide at, at the end that, yeah, you just, you gotta get rid of that. By the time a new school is built, whoever's in there from that day is still gonna be in this building. So it isn't like they, we're gonna be on, I don't believe we'll be on the hook for that, to have kids going into the new building if we know in a year and a half that it's gonna be axed.
But again, my suggestion to this, if, if this is what the committee decides, the direction they, they decide they want to go, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go two years. I think we really need to take a look at the, we have another ten exploratory rotation cycles this current school year. And the end of March, the first part of April, students will select their final programs. I think that's the time to have, to follow conversation to this. And again, if, you know, all, all these great people step forward and we can revitalize that, and, you know, and student interest steps up, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna call out the elephant in the room. It's student enrollment that is the issue with this program. It's not job opportunities, it's not industry openings, it's we just don't have kids that are interested in it. I think if you go two years, you're gonna be too far into the MSBA project. I think it's gonna be too disruptive to try to change a proposal. And again, I think that's also gonna bring the ire of MSBA down on us. And I think that there's probably gonna be a lack of flexibility from them.
Well, it, it could be the, I, I would agree with that, but at the end of it, we have to put this in, in the next two days.
Yep.
Right? So whether we decide, oh, we only have the one cycle or two, we will know more after, later on, if we could extend it to two years or not. But I think, the way I'm looking at it is, from what you wrote, is to, you know, put it in there and even, like I said, with the real things. And you know what I want to say, because one thing that you mentioned was, you, your leadership team had a very short window to put this all together. And I know I'm more than appreciative of, of all the stuff between the chapter seventy-four viability study and the other study here that, um, so I don't wanna, they don't take a slight, uh, I'm just, oh, at least I can't speak for everybody else, who's just like ignoring all their work. And I, and I know how much it put into, and there's a lot of other stuff that's involved, and so I'm just saying for myself, man, I hope. If we decide to vote today, I personally still appreciate everything, and it's nothing, it's not a slight on them.
I also want to echo that. I fully appreciate the amount of work that Tony and Jess and Mike have done and that. I don't want any of you to think that our opinion has anything to do with your confidence in your. We fully understand how you got where you got.
Again, thinking we have two staff members and, and potentially an aide that's assigned in there as needed, um, twelve kids per grade level.
What?
I was gonna say, by, by, by guidelines, they're saying fifteen to one. I, I think that's a little high, but that's just me.
In the application to the MSBA, are, are you actually having to put numbers down for the various different programs?
Yeah, oh, this is all spelled out in here.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's on, it's, if you go to that chapter seventy-four viability document, um, it's, it's spelled out, um.
I got it on page two, I don't know.
It's that, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong one. I'm in the end, plan here.
It's an overview.
Oh, I see it, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, I, I saw that, yep.
Yeah, we have, we have to list our current enrollment, we have to propose capacity. Uh, and then there's a total, I mean, so our, our proposal at this point is sixteen hundred and seven seats. Um, and again, I, you know, like I had said, we're gonna meet with MSBA in January. That number could be significantly reduced based on what they look at and what, what, what their enrollment projections are.
And if you look at that document, so you have auto collision has fifteen. There you go, this verbiage we should get rid of, right?
Yeah.
It is existing program and put, I don't know, make a number up for the total there. Because in culinary arts, you get twenty-two, and you brought it up to sixty. So you certainly could do fifteen to thirty.
Yep. I mean, we could do thirty-six, I mean, if you want to do, well, per grade level, that's thirty-six kids. But that, that's gonna, that's gonna now raise our total to sixteen forty-five-ish, sixteen fifty range. We, we can put, again, I, I'm, I'm here to facilitate the conversation. Staudi and I had already had a conversation, you know, again, tomorrow morning, we need to add that back in. Um, we will go through and update those two lists, and that document will be submitted appropriately. Um, but six months, nine months from now, we may be having a different conversation. When we have our enrollment meeting with MSBA, uh, those, all those numbers kick out the window.
Yeah, they could shatter. I mean, you basically, you, you're saying basically, like, one of the biggest things for is basically enrollment pressure. But basically, you say to grow that, you need a bigger school. But basically, when they come in, you're on their dime. You guys submit something and they just blow it out of the water. I mean, you used Minuteman as an example, it was like twelve hundred, how many people, I mean, they have before, and I think it was like fifteen towns now.
Twelve, thirteen hundred, I think, and I think they're down to seven, eight hundreds, yeah.
And then towns drop out, like.
Well, yeah, they did.
Several towns dropped out.
They did, yeah.
But they were.
And this whole thing's predicated on, and again, I, I had shared it with the chair of a building committee. We had to do a whole, we, we, we had to give like ten years of enrollment numbers by community, who, who applied, who got accepted, who actually enrolled. And then MSBA also goes back on their end, and they have a whole database where they'll look at, how many kindergartners are there in our five sending communities? And they'll project that out, and they'll look at how many building permits were pulled, how much, you know, they, they'll go through this whole thing. And that is legitimately what drives a lot of those conversations. They don't care that we say, we've got two hundred, we, we potentially have two hundred kids on a waitlist. They're gonna say, well, by our projections, fifteen years from, fifteen years from now, the population of school age kids is gonna be down twenty percent. We're gonna reduce your number by twenty percent. End of conversation.
Right, yeah, that's a big projection. They'll work all that off from the census, because people thought, okay, how many one-year-olds? Okay, and so fourteen years is gonna be, all these one-year-olds are gonna be, assuming they appear to have a formula, but how many are gonna move out of town? How many are gonna move into town?
And in our case, we have two high schools in every town. So, you know, we don't know how they predict that the ten thousand kindergartners in fifteen years, how many of them are gonna go to Shawshank, and how many of them are gonna go to their public?
Yeah, you guys got all these high schools, seniors. You stick a ride down.
I think, I think they do.
They actually do.
Yes, they do.
They have, they have a way to figure it out, we don't know what it is.
Yeah, they go there, they have it all the time. They count, they know from age one all the way up. And project, it's great for how long. But like, as you also, like you mentioned, even if we had a, not enrollment, but if we had people applying, say, two thousand, say, we can show, we get two thousand kids, they could still turn around and say, we're only gonna give you a school for thousand.
Well, we don't know what they're gonna do, so I think we have to move on. Right, we don't know.
Okay, so do I have a motion or what do I have?
I'll make a motion that we go with these two studies, but add auto collision to it. Just all the data that's needed to add.
To keep collision.
To keep the auto collision.
To keep auto collision, and to add, or, no, to add to what is, what we've got in our package, we'd have to add auto collision.
I'll second that.
You two amend it.
File in the seventy-four. To add it to that, and you have a second?
I'll second that motion. I just wanna, I wanna make a statement, uh, Tony, I wanna thank your team, did an incredible job. And I've been thinking about it from your side of the table. It's a very difficult thing.
Absolutely.
I don't want to see people lose jobs. I don't want to see a program being closed. I read those emails, passionate people. I taught here thirty years, I love this school, it's my highlight. I don't, I don't want to see something die. I want to see us, how we can bring this back to life. I had that conversation with Dennis and Mark. I know, I know. We gotta get, what are we gonna do? We gotta recruit them, get them out there. I, I, it's hard. I know. I know, if we go to the state, they're gonna say, I know, we had that conversation.
Excuse me.
You go to the state, they're gonna say, why is, why is it still open? Well, if we have a plan, then we can save it. That's my feeling, thank you.
Can I ask a question? And I, I'm not trying to modify anybody's motion, but are we gonna put a timeframe on this?
Yeah.
Are we just gonna say that, you know, if, if we're gonna find ourselves here in another five years or another ten years?
What do you mean by a timeframe?
Yeah, like a year.
We had talked about, like, you would suggest it earlier, two, two exploratory rotations. I, I threw out in the conversation, I think we need to look at it at the end of exploratory this year. Are we attaching something to that or what's?
My question is, why would you have to attach it if MSBA, we don't know when MSBA is.
You're just saying that if he wants to bring this conversation back, and I.
It's a tight window, but, you know, can we look at what other schools?
Yeah, I mean, I thought you meant, I'll put something in the proposal to them saying, we'll know more. That's all you mean, maybe, I'm sure.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying as, I mean, we, we have this data in front of us.
As, oh, as a body.
As a body, what is the body's position on this? Are we, are we now just saying, you know, full speed ahead, we're gonna, auto collision's gonna be here until MSBA tells us we can't have it in a new building? Or are we gonna look at this again at the end of this? Are we gonna have that conversation and say, what's improved between, you know, with, with the input and the influence of our advisors?
So I guess I'm trying to, so what you're, you're proposing is that when we put, if we put, if it both goes to keep it, we're gonna put it in here, but also within this document, these documents, we're gonna tell them, we revisit them.
No, it's not in the document.
That's why, that's, since it should be a separate, since it's not, should be a separate motion.
If we have, if we have a separate meeting, you guys are gonna get another hundred emails. We're gonna have another hundred, another fifty people in the cafeteria.
Two other emails.
I know, we need correct emails.
I don't have a problem with that. It's okay, I got, I got the gist. Just as one, I, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with that. I can agree with that, as long as it's not like, I'm just concerned if you put that in a.
I don't know, I'm sorry. I don't want to put it in the MSBA.
Don't put it in that.
I don't think that's a good idea.
I think as a body, this group should, should say, you guys have till the end of this exploratory rotation. We expect to see ten first choices. We expect you to get six first choices.
It's, it's.
But I think that's a separate motion.
I think it is, too. I think it's gonna be.
Because, yeah, otherwise if we go with the, the, fine, I'm, I just. So let's, let's move the motion. Let's go with this, and then we can discuss, because I have some other questions on that.
But I, I think it's also dependent on, to be helpful, to know what other schools, like, be referenced nor. But I think it's also dependent on, to be helpful, to know what other schools, like, be referenced Northeast. It'd be helpful to know because it's like a rock and a hard place, both. It's like, you're basically saying, okay, you're eliminating a program, you can potentially grow, which is, I'm like, I agree with Patty, it's eliminate a program, but it's it's a two-day decision, basically, when you're on it. So it's, it's kinda like, I
So based on my conversation with the Northeast superintendent, they had originally taken auto collision out of their MSBA plan. Now, I don't know when it was added back in, but it may, again, it may have been another conversation like this where they said, hey, we're gonna give you a year to straighten this out. Um, it may have been a little further in the process after they looked at the numbers. Um, I didn't, I didn't ask him all the specifics around that.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's it's it's, you asking people, not saying you, I'm not, I'm just saying generally, it's hard to make a decision. I know we have to make one, but it's also gonna be helpful if we leave it in, to Charlie's point, but it's also, we're not gonna tell the MSBA that, but basically, it's also gonna be helpful if we have that plan within a year. But it's also gonna be helpful to know, to talk to other schools, because we're not the only vote school in the last. So we have that data to know what they've done. Like, you talk to Northeast, you talk to some of these other schools, to find out what they do. Because just to say that we don't have that and we have other peer schools that have done this, so I think reaching out to those schools and having a plan. So, yeah, I don't think leaving it in or take, putting that in as a as a footnote. Yeah, you don't wanna footnote that, but I think if you say within a year, but we gotta say with the support of this side and also you have peer schools out there to find out that have gone through this process, I think we need to reach out to a lot of those schools to figure out what they've done to use that in a strategy to figure out, because this side can only do one side. So I think that's to to vote how you want, but I think that to agree with you, you have to have some type of plan knowing with it within a year.
Well, and again, looking for, and again, I, maybe it is a separate motion, but looking further down the road, if we can say to MSBA, we, you know, advisory committee came in, we gave them, you know, that school year, here's all, here's the changes we saw. They got ten kids, they did this, that, you know, whatever it is, that's a different conversation. If we just say to MSBA, well, we told them that, you know, we'd move forward with this, and then if we have to take it out, we might take it out. I'm I'm also trying to set us up for success here. Now, again, hopefully this, all of these things fall into place. This is, this is a non-starter, we move on from this, the program is, makes a fabulous recovery, we have a whole bunch of students that are interested in it. But I also wanna make sure that those pieces are in place, because if if it's two years from now and we're having this same conversation, we're not gonna have a justification to MSBA about what we did and the timeframes that we assigned to it and and what what we did to be accountable. And I think it's gonna be a different conversation.
So so can I just, I know we're still in a motion and all, but question for advisory, do we have a commitment from the advisory group that you're able to help this year?
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Short timeframe, we can do it.
Short time, yeah.
We can do it.
Okay, thank you.
Clarifying question. Were we not in an in an MSBA process? Would we even be having this discussion or would we be having it with a little less pressure because we have a fail, we have a shop whose enrollment is is sliding and 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 quite frankly, that's gonna raise some difficulty. There's still some issues that need to be addressed about why that's been happening. But would we be having this conversation if we weren't in MSBA process?
Not right now. But I will say, we do have a new director vocational and technical programs. Um, and Mr. Hurley and I have already had some conversations about having some type of tool every year to kinda look at programs and enrollment and and what's going on in them. So that we could have more of a systemic approach to this in the future, um, so that advisors aren't surprised, parents aren't surprised. Um, and again, what that looks like, it it's gonna take us some time to develop something like that and bring that online, but um, you know, potentially in a year or two, that's something that we could be, um, we could be utilizing to share that information on a regular basis, which I think is a good thing for us.
I think too, I mean, we have other shops that are under enrolled. That email.
Okay, let's get the vote, yes. All those in favor of leaving auto collision in?
Putting it in there.
Leaving it in. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
opposed?
Nope.
All right, and I'd like to make a motion that
All right, can I, can I stop you before you do that?
Of course.
I'm looking at this and I don't see it the way he sees this at all, all right? I'm sorry. You can come back to us at any time and say, gee, I, you know, I've looked at the numbers again and this. I don't think we need to give him, you know, to say, okay, if it's not done in a year, then we want it back, uh, you know, we want this issue back. I'm not in agreement with that, because maybe it'll take them two years. You know, I mean, you know, well, let's say next year they get, instead of three, they got four. Okay, it's an improvement, but is it improvement enough? So we'll wait another year. I really don't wanna put a time limit on that. If he wants to come back in a year or two years and say it again, that's up to you. You you can have a different opinion.
No, 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 you wanna go first, because you were trying to
I was going to suggest, I won't make it a formal motion, but how about then we make a motion to the shop as a group to please come back in six months, four months, January, February, March, you know, something, with an update. Not, you have a deadline, not you have to get your numbers up to a certain um number by a certain time, but you know, like, we wanna hear in March what you, you know, what you did, and then we'll see in April how the numbers played out, you know, they can come back and they say, we did A, B, C, and then
Well, the exploratory.
Exploratory, we can then have the exploratory information, so then we have data from both sides, kind of. And we look at it again. Is that a deadline per se? It's not, if you don't come up with seven kids, we're closing you tomorrow. It's, but we want a report in the spring, in the early spring of what you, you know, what what was, what worked out, what were you able to do, how was it responded to?
And I I I will respectfully disagree with Patty. I I do, I do think we need some higher and fast deadlines around this. Um, the other thing is, I think we're, you're you're postponing kind of an inevitable conversation, because if we get to April and if if there's six kids or there's ten kids, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have the same thing. We're gonna, we're gonna have fifty people here, we're gonna have a hundred plus emails, we're gonna have all of these things. So, I mean, I think i- this is my opinion, and again, I I serve all of you, and whatever your decision is, I I will absolutely abide by and implement with fidelity. I think having those guidelines from this body is helpful. Because now people know, here's the goal, here's where I have to get, because you know, what what Miss Buse thinks is is improvement versus what I think is improvement versus what Charlie thinks is improvement. Everybody's gonna have a different opinion, and I think it would behoove this group to say, here's your target. This is what we wanna see in April at the end of exploratory, um, so that they're informed, the advisory committee's informed. Everybody has the information that they need to to proceed forward and know where, know where they're going.
Okay, can I, let me give you another scenario, because obviously, these are all public meetings. So the MSBA will be aware of what happened here, all right, possibly. You know, I mean, if it was on the news, it was on this, it was, right? But if we just leave it and not say, okay, you have to make an improvement by ten people in a year, and it doesn't happen, well, then you get the MSBA and say, well, it didn't happen. You know, I I I don't like that type of thing to
But I, but I think that's the reality, Patty. Like, that's what Brian said, is like, I I not for eliminating program, but you gotta live in reality of the fact that basically if they're funding, whatever the funding rate is, you're dealing with their, like Tony hit the nail on the head, like you could basically go and say, I wanna keep, you know, and they could blow that right out of the water and then, sorry.
Everything.
So, I'm also, I'm sorry.
There are thirteen items on the subject.
I know, I'm sorry.
May I respectfully suggest that we further discuss and have a potential motion on guidelines, deadlines, et cetera, for the shop at the next meeting? Because we all have very valid opinions.
World Series ended at two fifty.
I, I, yes.
Just to follow up, what's, I believe, really strong
You want me to come back?
Strongly in the power of recruitment. Um, and that's why I'm very pleased that Bedford, which only has six kids in the current freshman and graduating class, has twenty-one kids in class. But it's because people made an effort to take a town where people weren't showing any enough interest in vocational action and did it. And it took a few, but quite frankly, if 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 necessity is the mother of invention, as the great auto body shop owner Benjamin Franklin once said, that if you, if there is no guidelines, if there's no time, we will wind up with the same situation a few months from now. And Patty, with respect to what you're saying, but they sort of like, well, we'll just sort of see, two, three years. Maybe it'll be the same, maybe it'll be, no, that's not gonna get us anywhere. All those wonderful folks have done incredible work in the last few weeks. People who've never thought about the school are approaching some of us in places, so good thumbs up on the effort you've made. I mean, even, you mentioned your hair salon. I was in a hair salon today. I got asked about auto body shop. I don't know why, but I did. So, again, good work getting the word out. But if this is not in a in a identifiable timeframe.
But I think I think like six months is not long enough.
I'm just saying we have this whole conversation next month.
Yeah.
Cause I do not wanna be here till midnight.
Just trying to give them a
I'm with my dad.
All right, fighting chance. I, we talked about, you know, we've been getting thirteen, you used to get fifteen. Uh, uh, can we bring that up for the rest of the year? I don't know how that works.
Kids have to choose it.
Yeah.
That's the first hurdle.
No, for the explor, for the rest of the explorer, I'm sorry.
Kids have to choose to go into the exploratory. They only do fourteen out of twenty. We don't make them go through every shop.
No, 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 so I thought
The schedules are already made.
That's what I mean, so you can't
I mean, we can go back and look, I I don't have the data in front of me. My guess is that, I I mean, I don't know.
You don't think there are more than twelve kids?
Things have changed since my kids came to the school, but they were such a shop they didn't wanna go to.
Yeah.
So they didn't pick, so so, so that's my point.
I'm fifty-two. If you ask me to pick fourteen shops here, I tell you, you're out of your mind. I could probably find four or five.
I guess, if you got a kid picking all his hands-on stuff, like all the traditional
You got auto body exploratory as as a student, yes.
You got auto, auto, auto body, metal fab, machine shop, I can go right around, all of, you know, conference electrical, HVAC, major. You've got kids there, and they want to go into collision, but use, because they want kids to explore other avenues, see what other stuff is like, that's non-traditional. Some of them kids, are they gonna be going to one of the medical things and they don't want nothing to do with it, they would prefer to be going to auto body, they're not going to auto body?
Yeah, that's a logistical thing that I don't wanna commit to, because that that's also a scheduling issue.
Yeah, no.
It's now many, it's a whole freshman class.
Like I said, to give them a fighting chance, right? They've been, they've lost, about forty kids the last few years.
We have ten rotations left.
Right.
What's a reasonable, is 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 one kid from each rotation recruited in an unreasonable expectation?
I, you know, I
Is it six kids out of ten rotations?
I, I, I'm sure
I mean, every kid does a lot, you know.
On a mine, no, but only only kids that have picked auto body will go through there. We don't force kids to ta, I mean, they have to pick fourteen.
Right.
So it may be their thirteenth choice, or maybe their twelfth choice. But there's also some kids in there that was their first choice or their second choice. I mean.
I know, but, well.
We have three hundred and fifty-three. Fifty-two freshmen, I mean.
All right.
All right.
I'm just trying to
Let's talk about it next time.
We all agree it's a recruiting problem. Your your recommendation to, as chair, is not to put a timeline.
Oh, yeah.
A deadline.
Right, not right now, because he kept making it shorter and I
Can we, can we take this up next time, next meeting, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
And you want, uh, Pat, why are you thinking of it? Are we gonna vote on the, uh, through Gwen, are we gonna vote on the educational profile?
Any questions on that?
From the west?
The educational profile, the
First part, it has to be changed as well, so.
We, and, again, I
The motion needs to be chan
I would amend the, I would amend the motion to say that that need, that both of those documents need to be updated to include
We already voted. I make a motion that we accept the
Well, you voted, you voted on the chapter seventy-four wanting to include that.
Yes.
So if you're, if the discussion is now the educational profile, the motion needs to include the same changes that were in the other document.
I make a motion that we take the educational profile, make the appropriate changes to reinstate color, auto collision and vote and accept it, the rest of it as is with only the auto collision changes.
Second.
You said it, okay?
You did.
Hold the paper.
Hi.
Hi.
Post. Okay. Yes, I was just gonna say, yeah, Mackenzie, you do not have to stay.
No, you don't have to stay.
I was gonna tell you
I don't get the vote either, I'm sorry.
But you don't have to stay.
You don't have to have to stay.
As long as you want.
I know it's the longest we've ever had student rap.
I want to stay. You're gonna learn, and you don't want, someday, someday you'll become a school committee president.
Well, as soon as you
When you want, you're tired, you have to go home to bed.
How do you get home? I don't know.
Oh, it doesn't fit.
It doesn't fit.
Interesting. Can we get it to bed?
Pat, did you break your sign? You just broke the sign.
Yours looks different than all the rest of us.
It's dirty as hell, that's why. Yeah, we go back to
Yes, we're going back to
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, you guys are on the clock now.
Don't not wake the clocks. Life is, but you're on the clock.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No question.
I do, I do too.
Do you have Mr. Kirk?
I did have Mr. Kirk.
He's working on it. I know it.
I did have
I'm questioning.
Okay.
No, it's not auto collision though.
Oh. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Hello, everybody. Um, so Tony asked me to just come and give an update on the two thousand twenty-five accountability data for our school. Um, I have a folder with just a couple color printouts, um, in case you wanna look more closely at some things on the slides here. And so, um, as I'm sure everyone is aware, um, from year to year, the largest factor in determining our accountability rating, um, is student performance on MCAS. And because, um, I wanna do right by our staff here and the great work that they do, I wanna first give some context before we dig into those MCAS numbers. Um, the first is, we know that this ballot vote happened and it's no longer a graduation requirement. And I found this map of Eastern Massachusetts interesting, showing dark green are communities, and I circled uh, our five communities, our uh, communities that had high levels of yes for getting rid of the MCAS, down to the blue, which was communities that voted no. So I was talking to some administrators a few weeks ago from other schools, and they were saying, you know, if you look at your sending towns, um, if students come from places where the parents were against MCAS counting, there's a correlation with the students, you know, maybe not taking the exam as serious. And so we haven't like run data on that, but I think it's interesting to note, you know, many of our communities were in the higher percentages in wanting MCAS to no longer count. So I think that context is important. Um, the second piece, and I have to give credit to Mr. McGrath, he'll be hearing from shortly, because he did this analysis for us. But Dussie gives us, um, suggested time in taking the MCAS, so they recommend that students spend four and a four to four and a half hours on ELA, three to four hours on math, and three hours on science. And what Mr. McGrath did here is he took the time students spent on each test. So, um, in each set of, uh, of the bars, the, it goes ELA, then math, then science, and it's the amount of time that they spent. And so you can see, students who spend more time, this is the exceeding expectations. And then the average time for students for not meeting were very low. So the suggested time for ELA, four to four and a half hours, average time for students who didn't do well, two hours and twenty minutes. Um, even looking on some of the times for some of the students who didn't pass, um, on a thirty-four question test, they spent seventeen minutes. You can't even read all the questions in that amount of time. And I'm sharing this with you because nothing has changed with our staff and the level of fidelity with which they approach preparing students for the exams. What has changed is that the students know it doesn't count, and they'll tell us that. Um, and so I just ask that you keep that in mind as you look at the data. So when you go on and all, this is from Dussie's website, on their site, on there are two things that they break down for us. The first is our, um, progress toward improving targets. And so that's where on every accountability indicator, they give us a goal or a target to reach. And we're assessed not necessarily on the performance, but on our movement toward that target. And so we received thirty-six percent, um, which has been labeled as moderate progress And so we received thirty-six percent, um, which has been labeled as moderate progress on this scale down below at the bottom. We typically are used to being in the meeting or exceeding substantial progress range. Um, moderate progress, um, is still in the not requiring assistance from the state. There were more schools that fell into these buckets than in the past. We're not the only school where students didn't put the same level of effort into the MCAS. And then in terms of our accountability percentile, um, sixty-nine was our number for that. Essentially, we're performing better than sixty-nine percent of schools in the Commonwealth on accountability indicators. So these are the indicators that they, um, that they assess us on. So they break it down into achievement, growth, high school completion, proficiency toward EL proficiency, and additional indicators. And within each, they have some, uh, buckets within that. For instance, under achievement, we have ELA, math and science achievement on the MCAS. And I'm not going to read each one for you all. There is a copy of this in your folder. And on this side, it shows us the weight. So achievement is forty-seven point five percent of how they determine our rating. Um, growth is twenty-two point five, high school completion twenty, and additional indicators are ten. And then you can earn anywhere from zero to four points, um, on these, depending on your performance. And so you will see for achievement, for MCAS, we didn't hit our target, so we did not earn points in those areas. Um, what's really impressive, I think, is more important, and we always beat our sending districts on this, is we did get three out of four points in growth for both ELA and math. The achievement is just saying, you know, compared to last year's score, average score amongst your students, did you progress forward? It's not comparing the same cohort. Growth is looking at the eighth grade scores of our students to tenth grade. And so what we do know is students who came here exhibited growth on the MCAS. Um, we always do really well on high school completion. We got eleven out of twelve points in that area. Um, we don't have a large enough cohort to get rated on progress toward, uh, EL proficiency, which is why this one is blank. Um, and then the additional indicators, chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism and advanced homework completion, um, three out of four and two out of four. And so I know that this is, um, a lot for anyone who's new to seeing it. And I just wanted to break down an example from each of these big buckets to show you a little more in depth about, um, what we look at when we're looking at our accountability data. So as we said, under achievement, that's the blue area. We have, um, how students did on each of the three exams. So you have a packet that includes this type of breakdown for every single indicator. Um, I just brought up the ELA one as an example. So when I was talking about targets, our average score for all students in two thousand twenty-four was five oh six point four. Dussie set a target for us for this year of five oh seven point nine, uh, for two thousand twenty-five. And our student average was five oh two point two. And so because we had a decline, we didn't, we received zero points there. And we saw our decline across the board and for reasons I've already shared, we weren't shocked by that. But it's not like the average score dropped to four hundred and forty overall. It's a drop overall of four point two. And then what they do, and you'll see in the full packet, for each of these math, science, growth, et cetera, they break down the different student groups. And that's important to us when we look at this data, um, because we know where to target for interventions. Just as an example, at our two thousand twenty-three data, we saw across almost all of the indicators that our low income group of students had declined. So we made a number of changes with how we, um, put reports out to staff, uh, how we structure our interventions to target that group. And they are no longer showing decline, um, in multiple categories. They have improved. So this is what's important for us there. Similarly, um, so I use ELA again. The next bucket is growth. So although on the achievement it showed us as a decline, um, because of our level of growth here, they tell us we had typical growth high for students overall. Our lowest performing students exceeded typical growth. Our students with disabilities had high growth. I won't read them all, but you can see from that. Um, so it's the same test, ELA. The last slide was just showing what the achievement, what the scores were, but this is the one showing the growth. In the next bucket for, um, for high school completion, the example I just put up is our four-year graduation rate. So in two thousand twenty-three, these are a year behind, so that's why it's twenty-three and twenty-five. Um, we had a ninety-nine point three percent four-year grad rate. Um, in two thousand twenty-four, ninety-eight point two. Even though we dropped from year to year, because we do so well, the target from the state was ninety-five. So we still got full points there, uh, because we're doing so well. And the last example I'll give from the final, um, grouping is on chronic absenteeism. This is something that we've really been targeting, um, in the past few years. We've seen improvements in. And similarly, it's set up the same as the last view, but you can compare it twenty-four to twenty-five, see what our target is and how we did for each student group. So that's a lot of charts to look at. So Dussie doesn't produce this, but every year I make this chart is a cheat sheet. So basically, all of those indicators are listed here. The student groups along the top, and then you can quickly see where we did well and where we need to target for improvement. Again, we know about the MCAS achievement. Um, that is, those are the areas where we didn't get points. Look at all the green though, under the growth. We did really well there. We continue with our four-year grad and our extended engagement rate. Um, students who take five years to graduate were exceeding the target across the board. Annual dropout rate is doing well. Um, but when I look at this, what I see is, in addition to continuing to look at MCAS, we have to continue to target chronic absenteeism. We saw a decline with our students with disabilities and Hispanic and Latino students. So when we look at attendance data, we're breaking it down by these student groups. Um, and in advanced, of course, work completion, we saw a decline in high needs students. High needs is a combination of, um, low income students, students with disabilities, um, and English learners. It's an equation that the department used, uses to figure that out. And so we use this map year to year to figure out what we're going to target for improvement. And I'm going to bring you to my last slide, because I know you have been here very long. Um, so very quickly, what are we doing to drive improvement? Well, the first thing I'll say is we don't just stop and say, that's good enough. We're continuing to do things that we know work. High quality instruction, analyzing student performance and adjusting appropriately, having intervention meetings at mid and end of quarter with all administrators and counselors. We have a weekly student attendance meeting, because we've really been, uh, targeting chronic absenteeism. Uh, we're continuing to try to get that early college designation. That's how we can get those advanced coursework numbers to go up. Um, and continue to use our multi-tiered system of supports. We're also reviewing and updating or adapting, um, curriculum for content areas. We're looking at our course offerings and course sequence. As, uh, as you know, this is our first year running biology just in grade nine, so that students won't take all three MCAS exams tenth grade year, so we're hoping that'll show a positive change. Um, we're making adjustments to our MCAS remediation program. Relooking how we do MCAS testing days, those early release days are not, I'm, those are, like, we're the, I don't know how intimately you're aware of MCAS days, but we had like seniors in study hall and it, we need it to be like a regular school day, so we're working on that. We have a new attendance tracking and notification system. Um, and we have a lot of collaboration going on as we're working on anticipated changes to the competency determination. We're about to implement, uh, within the next month, attendance makeup days for the first time. And we have our guided staff working on career planning and other updates to guidance curriculum. And above all else, we have committed staff who want to build relationships with students. We know that students do well when they want to be there and they feel known. And so I tried to do that as quick as possible, because I know you've been here for a long time. If you have any questions for me about two thousand twenty-five accountability data.
I hope it is.
Yeah.
Yes, we knew that there was going to be an issue when MCAS became. Now I'm in play and I, I saw that. I voted no, but the average person said.
Yeah.
Why not? We know a lot of students just coming in and leaving. It stinks.
Yeah.
And I don't know, you know.
And.
I know when I, when I've discussed, and I've discussed with you and the other, Dussie says, okay, we, who set a rules coming down the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when I looked at our sending towns accountability data, um, three of them received between only zero and three points on MCAS. So it was pretty consistent with our sending town, and it was our three larger towns as well. So it's definitely not just us.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so first of all, thank you, Jess. Ton of stuff.
Yeah.
Um, this slide right here, we don't have a copy of.
Oh, um, I can give you.
Can you give me? I'd love to see it.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Can you give us that first slide that showed percentage of how the vote went?
Yeah, I can give you all that. Absolutely.
I'll just share with the caller, she'll get it out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGrath. Sorry you had to wait till.
Normally you wouldn't hold by now.
Yeah, I showed him in bed for hours.
That's right. They've been sleeping.
Mr. McGrath, you look good.
Thank you very much. So thank you, everybody, for having me. I'm going to try to go as fast as Ms. Cook. Feel free to interrupt with questions as they come up. Um, so first I thought I'd introduce myself. I just talked about like the who am I? So, um, I am a Bedford, a current Bedford resident. I grew up in town. I graduated from Bedford High. I, um, moved after college to Wilmington, so I was still in the district, just in a different part of the district. Um, moved back to Bedford in two thousand twenty-two. Um, I'm not alumni, but I am a father of two, one of whom is a Shawshank daycare alumni. So the other one is in the pipeline. Um, I was in the math department for fourteen years and I spent seven of those years as the department chair. Um, I thought at the end I would mention this, so as part of our, uh, summer experience with the admin team and also as part of opening days, Ms. Cook put together, like, it was a communication activity. And basically what it was, is an inventory of, uh, paired statements, so two statements that you would read and individually decide which one of them sort of you, you related to more. So after you did the entire inventory, at the end, you would just, you would go through like a scoring guy that would allow you to fill in your answers into buckets to figure out what kind of communication style you have. So as you can see up there, there was action, idea, people and process. And we took it two different times and I forgot what I did the first time. But consistently, within a point or two, I was process first and then very close behind I was people. Um, and I think that it sort of speaks to like, when I talk about what I've done so far, what I plan to do and with ongoing, that a lot of the things are driven kind of by the process and the people. So not just the what are we going to do, the why are we going to do it, but the how. So I sort of, and it might be my math background. It's all about, okay, that's the answer, but how do we arrive there? So a lot of the, the things that, uh, sort of we've started this year with are around the process and then getting people, the staff members to buy into it, because a lot of the changes that we've implemented so far, I have to thank the staff, all, along with the administration and their support of me in a new space and a new role. The staff members here have been great about like buying into what it is that I'm trying to sell. Um, and hopefully it's going really well and you'll see in future slides kind of what that looks like. But it was all about sort of the process and then the people. So what's been done so far, um, the first thing was, as I onboarded as a new person and I was trying to get an idea of, of where everything was, I came from a math department background where we had a file sharing system, um, for curriculum, the lesson plans and that sort of thing. But as I come to find out, all of the different academic areas sort of had their own system. And it just seemed sort of silly that like as a district, we didn't have like a centralized location for pretty much everything. So what we did is create a Microsoft Teams, um, that, uh, because we're a Microsoft school, it made a lot of sense to be able to, to build it in that way. And it's permissions protected. As a math department member, I, we had an instance where somebody accidentally deleted something that they thought was theirs and it was somebody else's folder and then it took all sorts of ed tech work to be able to recover it. So we made sure that it's password protected so that, um, all of the staff members can view other folders, which I think is helpful. They can go in there, they can steal ideas and that sort of thing, but they don't, um, alter or, you know, delete something that is somebody else's. Um, it's a shared space for common resources in the spirit of trying to get people to collaborate, to share, um, and to pool ideas and resources. We try to make it that. Uh, lesson plans, management plans, subplans, curriculum and course resources. So this was something that, to be completely honest with you, I thought it's a good place for us to just collect everything we already have. Little did I know that what it was going to turn into is people then saying, hey, I was thinking I could add that to that because that might benefit somebody else. So it grew legs very rapidly, which I was very excited about because, um, it took on a leg that's on. Um, within those particular department folders, this is an example from the math department, there are course resource curriculum. So all of the folders are sort of structured the same way. Uh, we put a management plan template for some of the new teachers. We hope that this will be a place that if somebody is onboarded, and we have a number of new staff this year and the previous year, a bunch of new staff, that they would be able to come in here and be able to look at examples from other people, steal ideas and basically have an easier time transitioning into Shawshank. Because I can remember a number of years ago, fifteen years ago, that is, that when I first started, I was kind of just scrambling to figure out like, what, what is this supposed to look like? And, and what, what is my management plan supposed to look like? And how am I going to set up my categories and percentages and all that stuff? So, uh, we, we hope that this will be a place that they can go to. Inside each one of the school year folders, so two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and this is in the science department, it's just a teacher folder. So all those teachers can view each others, but they only have the editing, editing privileges of their own to protect their, their things. Um, but we can share ideas this way. And then that's where they'll put their lesson plans, management plans, uh, subplans, et cetera. So that exists on the academic side. And I think part of the role, um, in, in, in rejoining here and this being new to the building was trying to create consistency across all sides. So the vocational programs is the very same setup. Um, they have slightly different structure to it, but all of the clusters have a folder, same thing, password protected, permissions for shared space, safety tests go in here, uh, learning guides and projects, curriculum and course resources. Now, this was a bigger shift. Um, academics are already kind of had a, a similar setup. They just had to migrate everything here. For the vocational side, there were conversations where I talked to a shop teacher and I was like, oh, I think it's like on my desktop somewhere. And I was like, that's not saved anywhere like really safe. If this computer like blew up today, you lose all that stuff. So we worked hard on migrating things that were there. Um, other people had mentioned that the person who used to have that document, I think they retired. So we were like looking, trying to track things. And again, as Mr. Hurley was new and I was new, we were trying to get our feet, you know, on the ground about what it is that we have and where is it? And so that was really the driving force behind creating this. And then we thought it would be good for it to be consistent on both sides. As an example, your construction cluster inside the plumbing folder is curriculum. Um, and I think those guys, they did an unbelievable job. Again, this grew legs. I asked them for some very bare bones things and if anybody knows the instructors down there, they were very eager to give me even more than I'd ever asked. So everything from, not just the curriculum that they use with the students, but then the shop projects, like the specific documents for every project. So I'm not a plumber and I don't have the expertise, but I could go down there and open up that folder and then I could start distributing those handouts and try to make it run the best that I could. So there's like the entire playbook to the plumbing shop was added in the beginning part of the school year. So again, I'm very excited to see that this took, uh, like sort of on a life of its own. The next major shift was, uh, the grade book for exploratory. So for those of you who have had students come through here, you may remember that when your student went through exploratory at the end of the week, they got one numerical grade that made up their entire experience in that shop. Now, because they got one numerical grade, if at the end of the explore cycle, if a student, you know, potentially wanted a shop and didn't get in, then the questions were, okay, well, I, you know, I know my son or daughter scored an eighty-seven, but what, what made up that grade? And that usually required from, as I understand it, call to the vocational director, who then goes to talks with the shop teacher, who then gets like the paper copy or the Excel spreadsheet and then reports back to the parent. And there's like a lot of middlemen involved in that process. And because we have Aspen and academics was using it like with full fidelity and putting every homework, quiz, tests, et cetera, thought it made a lot of sense to be able to get the exploratory experience captured in a more complete way. So in an effort to make it more visible to parents and families, uh, and students, and also to make it more transparent, every shop was able to provide me with the categories and the percentages they wanted to use to factor into the exploratory grade. And then I was able to build out their grade book for them. Uh, part of the plan here is I built cycles one through thirteen, so cycle fourteen is not built yet. And that was done on purpose, because later in the school year, I'd like to have them practice with me copying and pasting cycle thirteen into fourteen to start to build some of the skills around how to use Aspen. Because I think one of the major hurdles early on was they've tried to do this in the past, but without a great deal of support. And then if they didn't feel like they had a good handle on it, they were like, it's much easier to just keep it on paper somewhere or to put it in Excel or someplace I'm comfortable with, uh, because I'll keep record of it, but I just don't have necessarily the understanding or the, you know, capacity to keep up with this. So we just posted, um, cycle four just ended by this Friday. Uh, we've been following up. Every week after the cycle ends, we ask them to post their grades for the previous cycle. Uh, but people have been great. Some of them have already posted it the Friday the cycle ends. But there's transparency so that parents and, uh, students can log in and see exactly what it was that either helped their grade or hurt it. So there was a common thread throughout all the shops between like employability skills, as you can see, a screenshot at the top, safety and behavior, participation, and then some sort of test or quiz assessment that way, and then projects depending on the type of shop. So although they are slightly different and they vary, there is a common thread that ties all of the exploratory expenses together. So this is brand new. And again, this is why I have to thank the staff, because without their investment in the idea and being willing to try it, it never would have gotten off the ground. So it was an idea that they took in random and so for that, I'm very thankful for that. Uh, MCAS data, so, um, Ms. Cook already kind of went through this whole thing. But what ends up happening when the state releases the initial, uh, MCAS information, it's a humongous spreadsheet and it's. it's a humongous spreadsheet, and it's got a lot of extra things in there that don't necessarily pertain to like the teaching and learning and the improvement of that. So, I cleaned that up. Uh, I use Aspen to merge in the teacher of record from the previous year and the course they ran, and because we have levels, the level of the course that it was, um, and then do cohort analysis so we can look at like how the honor students perform on particular questions, and then level two, and then level three, four, five, etc., depending on the subject. And then go into department meetings and meet with the teachers, and then provide them with the, the data so that they can use it to inform their practice and to, um, ultimately improve the teaching and learning across the school. So, that conversation obviously didn't cope quite as well as it has in years past because of the vote and because of the lack of, um, effort, not across the board, but in some spaces. Uh, but English, for example, was very excited that they got to hold the, the essays. So, the state releases the written essays that their students, uh, you know, the actual documents. It's a couple hundred pages of PDFs, but then they're excited to see that while this student may not have tried, this other one wrote like a beautiful five paragraph essay, and it was like all the fruits of their labor there. So, those conversations are, they definitely have some positive parts to it, although this year was not, um, our best overall score. Ongoing work, um, so I am visiting shops and classroom spaces. Uh, one of my favorite things about this job is being able to go out and see that teachers do their thing. Um, I've learned a lot because I've spent time in the vocational setting, and as an academic teacher in the past, I just didn't have time to do that, and there was no opportunity really, um, just because of the schedule. But I've been able to get in there and sort of see what exploratory looks like in action, see what upperclassman shops look like, stop by related classes, and then obviously, I know the math department really well, so I haven't visited them, but I've been out to the other academic areas because what lab science looks like versus an English class that's doing, uh, reading, you know, dissecting a, a poem, that's totally different than what I'm used to. Um, I am attending biweekly director and chairs meeting, so Mr. Hurley and his vocational chairs, Ms. Johnson and her academic chairs, um, I attend both of those meetings, which I think is really important because for years, they both exist separately, but there's no common thread between. So, I get to sit on one, take the ideas, the discussion there, go attend the other one, and then be able to say like, okay, well, it sounds like they're doing something similar, or maybe it's completely different, and then we have to kind of get together on the same page and make sure everybody is consistent. Um, I'm collaborating with Ms. Johnson on the following things. Um, we're developing some and implementing some common assessments for data collection. So, as Ms. Cook mentioned, like the new CD and the possibility of, and of course, assessments. In the meantime, doing some data collection on quarterly exams, just to see kind of where we're at as a benchmark. Um, we're gonna continue that, uh, consistency building process, and, and obviously, as we prepare for a new master schedule, whenever that happens, that's gonna shift teaching and learning, you know, curriculum instruction, assessment are all gonna change in some way. Then I'm collaborating with Mr. Pigeon on the MCAS planning logistics and the upcoming class of 2030's freshman placement testing when that happens, and then with Mr. Hurley, trying to build on the success we've had with Aspen grade book, and then we're updating related scopes and sequences as well as the shop ones. So, kind of getting to touch on all of the different places and also work with all the different administrators. I didn't mention here, but with Mr. Albert, um, special ed, working with paraprofessionals and sort of providing a template for maybe next year, how to make it so that we can train them on how they can engage with a teacher that they're paired with a little bit more efficiently. Um, and then with Mr. Carlson, with the guidance front, um, the John and Alga Gil Adam Scholarship for our seniors now that, um, that information is coming out. And then I said longer term goals here, um, the first one is just peer observations. This is an idea from one of the shop teachers. They said, I love going out and, whenever they have a chance, or like for 15 minutes, I get to see another shop's, um, exploratory, and I stole ideas in that 15 minutes. Like, oh, they do something really cool, I want to try that on my freshman. And I think getting teachers out of their spaces to go see other teachers is a massively important thing, because I'm seeing it for the first time now, how beneficial it would have been as a math teacher to have seen everybody else once. It's a little bit difficult, the schedule, to set everyone free to go see other things, but I think that's something I'd like to see done. Um, identifying professional development, so, um, just in our ongoing conversations, like the more I go into shops and classrooms, the more it's formulating like my thoughts on what might be useful. But I'm like only a couple months into that. Navigating the preparation for a new master schedule, because again, that's gonna shift the entire paradigm, what we do. And then I'm continuing, and I think it's the most important one, to support Mr. Hurley and Ms. Johnson. So, like their vision of what their programs are gonna be and what the people they oversee are gonna do is the most important thing. I view myself as like the facilitator for that. So, what I can do to help them, support them to make that work, that's, that's really what this is all about. So, that is it for me. I tried to go fast just because I was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
And you're just two months into it.
Jeff, I give a comment.
Comment.
I want to say, I'm so glad you got the position. You already talked about this position, about what you wanted to do, and so, um, you do, it looks like you hit the ground running here, and so, good luck, and I'm glad that we've been able to run somebody to the ranks. Uh, so, um, we're anxious to talk to you sometime down the road and see how things work out. So, good luck.
No, thank you, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Great. The pride of that.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to say one thing?
I just, I just wanted to thank all of you for adding and approving this position that Jeff is in. Um, it has been so huge. All the directors have so many people report to them, and they just put out fires all day, it seems like, and to have someone who can just immerse themselves in the teaching and learning side, it's been a game changer. So, I know that was a hard decision, but it was a really great one, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, and I will just echo, Jess and I have had many conversations about this. Jeff has been a great choice. Um, I think that he has already kind of implemented with fidelity things that Jess and I had a vision for this role. Um, and again, you know, we're only, we're only a few months into this, so I, I, I have great expectations from Mr. McGrath and, and what's, what's to come, so.
You don't have to stay. You have to stay.
Good job.
Yeah.
We're going home.
Nearly back here tonight, I mean, she should come.
Jeff, do you want to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Yes, Dr. K.
One thing about the comment is like the open meeting, if you look at Howard's most recent bill, I just want to note that like 70% of that was related to open meeting. So, I think it's like something we need to think about, about like, again, it's, you know, response, like I think it's something we really need to, because that's a huge amount of Tony's time and Howard's time and the, the, the committees, or the, the, uh, your time, you're not, you're, but Howard's are all spending like week bills. I think it's, you know, proving, but I think it's something we need to think about what to do going forward to better manage this and, and deal with it.
Okay.
Do we have a second? Any other second?
We have two seconds.
Yeah.
Was Bob?
Yeah. Bob.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, unanimous vote?
Tom's about to turn up behind you, Jim.
I got it.
All right. Um, I'm gonna go super fast. All right, uh, committee update. Um, I, I threw this out there, we don't need to discuss this tonight, but this is something I took last year's budget timeline. Um, I plugged the dates in. I know we have some of the joint committee meetings and some of the subcommittee meetings scheduled already. Um, I will share this out with people afterwards, please take a look at it. The next meeting, we can have a conversation if there's, if there's any timeframes that people want to adjust it, or you think that we need more time for something, we need less time for something. Um, but we, we definitely don't need to, uh, to, to, to dig through that tonight. Uh, October 1st enrollment numbers, um, just quickly, uh, Bedford up 20%. Woo, nine students, 20%. Um, they, they actually, our, our overall winner Burlington was close behind, up 19.33%, 23 students. Uh, Bill Ricka, up, you know, up about 17. Uh, we did see a decline with Tewksbury of, of four students, and, uh, we had a, we had a bubble of, of a really large class, um, from Wilmington that I believe has now graduated and worked its way out of there. So, our Wilmington numbers are down by about 32. Uh, overall, we're up 13 students. Um, again, we're not back to where we were, uh, three or four years ago. Our goal is, you know, our goal is to try to get to that 1350-ish range, 1325, 1350. Um, anyways, we will, um, we can, again, we can talk more about that if people have questions. Uh, enrollment, um, we have, we have had two students, uh, depart since I reported in September. We're down at 1292. Um, I believe they were ninth graders, um, but we have, we have said, we have said upperclass movement as well. We've had some students that had some attendance issues or had some other things and decided, uh, to opt for more of a, an online or a virtual program, um, because either from a medical standpoint or some other issue, they, they had a hard time getting to school on a regular basis. Uh, co-op update, um, again, this is, this is October 15th. Um, 25,266 hours work, uh, about 48% of our senior class is currently out, 125 employers. I just owe $400,000 in gross wages. Um, breakdown, um, by program, um, again, I'm sorry, by town. Um, you know, Bedford two, Bill Ricka 56, Burlington 10, Tewksbury 30, Wilmington 45. Uh, again, like I said, 143, that number has probably ticked up a little bit since I got those numbers from the co-op office, but, um, we've been, we've been operating on that, that 15th date. So, 15th of each month, I will get those numbers and then update them. I do apologize, I've been having some trouble logging in and out of this. It looks like I grabbed the older version of this. Um, new staff roles, we talked about at the last meeting. Um, I did just want to give people a reminder, um, at every meeting, um, the CHF 74 viability document and the educational profile are both due, uh, Thursday. Um, the enrollment questionnaire has already been submitted, that went in, I want to say, two or three weeks ago. Um, that one, we, we kind of just took care of, they were looking for numbers and historical patterns. Um, the next deadline that we have is the routine and capital maintenance plan. Um, and our facilities director, Bob Law, and I have already started to look at that. There's a lot of questions about, uh, what we do, you know, who performs the maintenance in the building, how much money we have budgeted, what do we spend on cleaners, um, you know, what's in capital, what's in our operating budget? So, we will be working through that document, and that is, that is something I'll, I will bring forward for people to review before it gets finalized. Um, and that was it. I, I did have something else, I'm, again, I, I apologize. Um, from the minute I walked in tonight, we've had connectivity issues, and I've had to log on and off about three times so far, so. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Subcommittee's policy.
Hey, guys, so, um, I'll call correctly, it's the, um, second, we need to vote on the admissions policy. Um, at the trunk or treat, a question did come up that I followed up with, and people that asked the question.
Yes, and I followed up with Tony.
It was sort of the description about when it goes from, um, the waitlist by town to the overall waitlist. It was confusing, um, how that worked, like would there be three number ones? Like a number one in Bill Ricka, a number one in Burlington, a number one in, and there isn't. The way it's done is the, you know, everybody's thrown in with all their appropriate weights, and numbers are picked, one, two, three, up to, you know, 500. And then, as they're picked, they're sorted by town, so that the Bill Ricka list isn't one, two, three, four, five, six, it might be, you know, seven, 20, 300, you know, we don't know. And so, each town has a list, but each town doesn't start with one and go to whatever the last number is. So, that when April 15th comes and we merge everything together, everybody already has an original number. We don't have to pull the numbers again. Did I explain that right?
That's correct, yep.
And the waitlist is different. So, the waitlist for the kids is different.
The waitlist will be all those numbers combined after the April 17th, I believe, is the date that's in there.
Yeah, sorry, Friday in April.
Yeah, they'll all, they'll all be merged. But again, because they're pulled in a rank order, however that rank order is, will make that, will make that transition, uh.
So, you, you pulling all of them just in, in ranking on one, so if you have 500 outputs?
In the very beginning.
Yeah.
In the very beginning.
That's why I told because all of them.
Each, each student will have like a unique, unique ID number that's assigned to them. And then basically, you know, like, like Taryn did use the example, the first student from Bill Ricka may be number 12, maybe number 73, um, and then, you know, and then the next one could be 200. Um, and then, you know, we'll just, we'll go, we'll go through as we pull those numbers, those will all be posted. That will be maintained until, uh, April 17th, and then on that date, then it goes, you know, 12, 13, 14, whatever's left.
Right, but, but, it's kind of like, so, like, we've got to take 350 students. Let's say each town didn't have their quota, so.
That's maintained until April 17.
Number 400 could be one of the definite kids. It doesn't mean because you're 400, you're not getting in.
That's right.
I just want to make sure people watching understand that.
We're also, we're also long, we're, we're, we're looking at about 330 or 340.
Whatever.
Um, we, we've, we've taken 350 to 360 the last two years, and we're, we're in a little bit of a pinch with the cafeteria. Um, so, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go 350 to 360 this year.
My main point was if, if they think we're taking 330 and their, their number is 400, then it doesn't mean.
Yeah, the unique identifier number doesn't mean anything, because that, the, the 550th kid could be the first one drawn.
And, and I think what he's also trying to say is what number you are on the list isn't necessarily a deciding factor either, because.
It's gotta go by community.
It's gonna go, so everybody, when they pull the numbers, you have a weight, but your town is not a factor in your weight, in, in, you know, so that, you know, what your number, don't panic about what your number is. Wait and see, because, you know, it'll be done, and then it'll be, okay, here are the first 75 kids from Bill Ricka, and they're all getting in, regardless of whether they're number two, number 300, or number 492.
Kids don't understand.
So, how does the weighting work? I mean, so kids are gonna get.
You get multiple entries.
Uh, so, okay, so, so explain, so.
An extra ping pong ball.
And, yes, yes, if, if we, if we're doing the old, the old bingo draw, the old, uh, mass millions draw, um, essentially, uh, we've picked, we've picked three categories. So, any kid that completes an application gets one entry. Um, if they, if they meet the attendance criteria, they would get two entries. If they meet the attendance and discipline criteria, we get three, or any, any combination thereof. Um, and again, this.
And obviously, nobody gets picked twice.
This, this is all done through the database that, I mean, uh, the company that we've, that we contract with for our admission software has done this in the city of Worcester, I believe, five or six years. Uh, Worcester Tech has had a lottery for, they were, I think, one of the first ones in the state to adopt it. Um, so, they do have some, and again, that's, that's a single district, so it is a little bit different, but they do have some experience with, with running this. Um, and again, I'm sure there's gonna be some growing pains, um, beside, if this, if this thing goes off without a hitch, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be shocked.
And as always, you know, we, 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 we evaluate it every year, and we've already said to Tony, you know, correct policies, already said to Tony and to Andy, you know, we'd like to hear back, you know, in the spring, after you do it, you know, how many hairs did you pull out of your head, and how many, you know, issues were there, you know, so that we know, it's not just, oh, in August, let's discuss all the problems and all the successes. We want to update, you know, sort of as we're doing it.
Uh, just one quick correction before this moves forward. On page four, um, I didn't, and I didn't, can I, I didn't correct, I didn't, yeah. I didn't identify this till earlier today. There's two columns of percentages, the one on the right should not be in there, that should have been removed. Um, that was something that was discussed with the policy subcommittee, um, and, and the policy subcommittee had recommended to stick with our historical community breakdown. So, um, those, before we vote on that, I just want everybody to know that, that will be coming out. Um, it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been in the draft, it was just something that got missed in the shuffle of all of the, all the papers.
Right. We might put it back in in a year or two, but we didn't think it was a good idea to have it when we're already having to suddenly tussling in the air.
Something we might revisit.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the admissions policy.
Second.
I have a second. All right, um, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
I am a conscientious objector, I am voting no, because, um, Jesse. I think all, all tech schools are gonna say, no, we're not doing it. Okay. All right, and the AI policy.
I don't, I don't care, anyone.
Just the first read, we, um, Tony had spoke, Tony and, Tony had spoken to some other schools that had policies in place, and so, this is what we came up with.
Our, our director of educational technology and digital, the digital learning was the one that did, did the lion's share of the work on this. And I, it was one, it might have, it might have been you, I, I forget, it was one of the committee members that brought some stuff back from one of the national conventions as well, that we kind of used as a, as a starting point.
We intentionally were somewhat vague, so that not restrict things, and we'll look at it every year.
But we did kind of agree at the meeting that we needed a policy, so that's, I'll bring it to you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
We are not in, hesitant to vote on this, it, the vote will be next month. So, if you do have, if you look at it more closely and have questions or concerns, please bring them forward.
Okay. Okay. Audit Subcommittee.
Okay, yes, the Audit Subcommittee, we had called it the Budget Subcommittee, uh, was, and interviewed, I did, I put a district treasurer, one gentleman, that, we had two applicants, one gentleman had, at the last minute, I didn't know his name, and we, James Williams was, was the other candidate that we interviewed. We had two applicants, one gentleman had, at the last minute, I forgot his name, and we, James Williams was, was the other candidate that we interviewed. Um, we all discussed it and if you wanna add anything.
No, I, I, we were very impressed by his credentials. And it was talk of, should we reopen his search? And Tony told us, we're not gonna find anybody. He told us, so you call around and we're lucky to get somebody.
And he was very impressive too, so it isn't, because we're just saying, you know, we're recommending, we are recommending him for the board, but it isn't just because we're. Worried that there's no one else is gonna be, that isn't the reason why. He did impress us.
So I also, I, I made some follow-up phone calls, um, the end of last week, so I, I talked to Brian Forge, who is the superintendent at Triton Regional. Brian is the chair of the Crest Board collaboratively. Um, Brian said, you know, again, he, he's only a handful of times a year that he interacts with them, but he said he's always been very professional, very prepared, um, has been very responsive. I did also reach out to, uh, Robert Jokella, and I'm probably butchering his last name. Um, and a gentleman by the name of Eric Boz. Um, Robert is the executive director at Crest and Eric Boz is their business manager. Um, and both of them had nothing but good things to say. They said even if, you know, even if Jim hadn't had past experience with it. Uh, he's very good at finding peer resources. He said anything that they've tasked him with, he has been more than up to the challenge and has stepped forward. And, and they were, they had nothing but good things to say about him, um, in that role as, as district, as a, well, they don't, it's not district treasurer for them, but he is the treasurer for Crest.
So this position will be, it's a part-time, obviously, um, every week, Tony, do we say?
Yeah, it, it's, it's probably a few hours a week. Um, and again, we'll, we'll, there'll be some, um. Well, and then on growing pains, some, some planning of, you know, what, what his role will be, is, is some stuff done remotely? Um, you know, there's, there's some, um, there's not overlap, but there's, there's some pieces of it that are being done by other members of the business, the business office at this time. That really should be under his review, so we will, we will work through those things and figure that out.
He's done stuff for Crest.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the guy who's like, he doesn't have like the, um, vocational, like, which is, you know, you're not gonna find, your point, you're not gonna find it perfect. But the guy does have a pretty impressive background in, you know, the public sector. He runs his own firm, um, at Crest. I think he's, you know, like one of the questions he brought up was about how you're gonna educate. He said like, you've got some Friday's in time to, like, reach out to different societies, like tax collector, municipal, or treasurer. So I think he's pretty good that way, so I think he's pretty, you know, his answer off question, I think he's good. I did actually talk to Howard about the, his interpretation of law. Interpretation of law for the treasurer is that it's a requirement, but like, like, um, GL laws, it's vague. So it does say it's a requirement to have a treasurer, but it doesn't simply say it's a.
It can be a board member.
It can be a board member, but, but it's more of like best practice is to kinda have that separate role.
I'll make a motion, we nominate, we appoint Mr. Jim Williams to the position of district treasurer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Tony, you'll, um, thank you for doing the background checks and the resume. Are you gonna handle negotiations?
That's what I was, that was gonna be my follow-up question. Um, there was a salary range posted with the position. Um, and again, I don't, is, is this something the committee wants to be the signator on his contract? I mean, he's technically a, a committee employee. Um, do you want, do you want me to do the negotiations and then, um, Patty would sign off on? Uh, you, you tell me, I, this is, this is obviously.
The sal, the salary it did, was that based on like what was?
What I found from other vocational schools, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's probably, yeah.
I'd like to get him in here as soon as possible.
Okay, so I'll work on that and then I can reach, then I can re, reach out to you, uh, if I'm gonna sign up, okay?
Yeah. Yep, that'd be great, thank you.
Is it a year, is it a stipend you're looking at, or is like, what is it, like a year contract?
It's, it's, I mean, it's a, it's really a yearly salary.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, yeah.
And what will be evaluated at the end of the year?
Yes, yeah, I mean, one year.
Yep, yeah, again, this is, yeah.
Tony, watch, Tony, watch your contract, we see, we discussed that, we'll see, hey, listen, I, I'm hoping for the best here.
You need some type of follow-up, say pending, like we voted him, but you need some type of, like amendment or additional thing.
Oh, it's, it's pending contract.
Pending contract, okay, got you, very good.
Yeah.
Okay, new business. Rules and valuation timeline.
Just in the essence of time, is there some stuff in here we could table?
I was just gonna say, um, I, I mean, as, as much as I'd love to sit here and talk about rules and valuation timeline, I think that's one that could definitely go till November.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just gonna connect to you.
Um, I think website contact could make, could make it an honorable agenda as well. Um, the open meeting law thing, the only thing I will say is, is Mestody has provided the, um, guidelines. Um, uh, there is a, um, expectation that, that there's an acknowledgement in there. Um, and if you read through the book, as elected officials, you're supposed to acknowledge that you've received the materials and that you're responsible for the content, blah, blah, blah. Um, I believe we're looking for those back at the next meeting, Mestody, yeah. Um, if, if you wanna, if you wanna send them back early, you're welcome to. M A, M A S S, M A S C, um, last year, I know, I think it was Glenn that had brought the conversation forward and wanted to know how people felt about the resolutions. Um, I will defer to this group that is, is way outside of my bubble. Um, you know, I, I, it was shared with people, we did print them out from the M A S C site. I don't know, I read through them quick, I, nothing really jumped out at me as being really controversial or provocative, but, um, I don't wanna speak for the committee either. I mean, that, I think that's something we, you know, do, do, do you wanna take a vote? To, uh, task Taryn to vote, to vote in a certain way on each one of those questions, or do you just wanna leave it to Taryn's discretion as the appointed representative for the committee?
And feel free, if we go that way, to reach out to me directly and give me your opinion. Okay.
That's coming up.
Do we have to do that, not do that?
And actually put the week out there.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're good with that?
Yeah.
Um, the chapter seventy funding one, I do want to put in front of people.
Put on this.
Uh, this is, um, yeah, we have to vote on that.
Can we vote on the, on the resolution?
Um, on what?
Inducted, says vote.
Potential vote.
Potential vote, okay, that's what, I mean.
He basically turfed it off to me.
You wanna vote on it, that, again, that's a, to me, that's a committee decision.
We had discussed this right at the.
Yeah, it's like the budget Subcommittee, yeah. So, um, we received notification from, uh, the Department of Education. Um, when the original chapter seventy numbers were released, it was, it was a seventy-five dollar in, uh, and seventy-five dollar increase per student. Um, once the budget went through the House and the Senate and got all rect, uh, all rectified at the end of the summer, that number rose to a hundred and fifty dollars per student. I think we did the math on that. It's somewhere around ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand dollar increase. Um, the state has sent us a letter telling us we need to take action. Uh, the first option is to, uh, add that money to our budget, increase our FY twenty-six budget by that exact dollar amount. And then we would have to send notification to all of our sending communities. It does not change their assessments, so they don't have to re, they don't have to reconvene and re-vote on it. They have forty-five days, um, to get together, to meet, to challenge it, whatever they wanna do. Uh, they can ignore it and after forty-five days, it's automatically implemented. Uh, my understanding is that's what typically happens with most of these things. Option B is we can go back and we can reduce everybody's budgets based on their student enrollment and co, or contribution to capital or whatever it is. By that dollar amount, which would then keep our total budget at the same thing. Um. That's a lot of extra steps. Uh, and then the third option is some blend of the two. Um, again, we've talked about it in budget. The, the, my recommendation, and I believe what the budget Subcommittee agreed with, was to go with option one. Um, and again, if this, if this board votes for that, Mestody and I will work on, uh, letters to go out to the town managers informing them of what those, what that increase is. And, you know, we'll add that dollar figure to our overall FY twenty-six budget.
Okay, we need a motion.
Next, the motion takes up option one. We move forward with option one?
Yeah.
Second.
For the chapter seventy, seventy funding.
For the chapter seventy, seventy.
The first option.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
So it was me. I was second.
Second by Stacy to accept the money.
Unanimous votes. Well, wanting now. Future agenda items, we do have.
Tony, do we wanna talk about, I know, about, about things, yeah, we mentioned about, you and I had a quick discussion about the MIA's philosophy on these, on these, and its tournaments. And I felt, and we, we received information from it and we talked, I talked to the coach and, and it was, it was ugly conversation, but. I feel so bad for the girls and I talked to you and I talked to Jess and I, we were talking that, you know. They, they, they slip one bias here and it wasn't just us. Do we want, I don't know, Alice had come into the conversation about what's the future of this and how's the MIA treating these tournaments? The vocational tournaments, do they want them? I don't know, I don't, you were getting some feedback or something.
Yeah, I, I mean, is, so is that a future agenda item?
Yeah, I was taking the conversation, cuz I, so I, I, I don't want this to happen again, those poor girls.
Yeah.
They worked hard and were told, you're not going.
Maybe part of that is sort of, um, thinking a little bit about the, the communication piece. Um, that, you know, were all the necessary parties informed of this change? Because my suspicion is that they weren't, because if everybody knew, maybe it wouldn't have slipped through the cracks. And I'm not saying that's on us, I'm saying.
Yeah.
MIA law.
We were allowed to submit the paperwork and then it was, when tournament time came around, they said, oh yeah, by the way, you didn't turn this in on the time, in the timeframe that we wanted it. Which to me sucks, so.
Which school was afraid we were gonna beat them, I guess.
Well, well, Ms. Huberty and I were, were having a conversation earlier. Um, I, I, the, the superintendent from Southeastern and I were back and forth over a bunch of stuff, uh, the end of last week. And, um, again, um, Southeastern has a field hockey team. There is one team that is eligible for the state vocational tournament for field hockey in Massachusetts this year. So by default, they are state vocational champions because they're the only ones that filled out the paperwork correctly and submitted it.
Why in that committee?
So, again, I know there's a lot of stuff around that. I, 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 I did send out something last Friday. It, it did kinda fall through the cracks. Um, parents weren't notified. It was actually the student athletes that were notified and, and rightfully so, some parents were upset by that. Um, you know, I went back, Jess wasn't aware of that, so we made sure we closed that loop on Friday and, and sent something out to all the parents, the student, all the parents and guardians to say. And I apologized. I'm like, you know, I, I didn't realize that the notification wasn't sent out through the coach or through the athletic director, whoever it was, so.
I don't know.
Was there any feedback from the, um, parents being interviewed by the news?
I haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah.
Not yet, no.
It was on a couple of news channels, but.
And I know, I know the superintendent from, from, um, Southeastern was impressed over the weekend, and again, her and I have had multiple conversations. I've talked to the superintendent of ITech.
Yes, yes.
Um, this, again, there was eight of us, I believe, all total.
We weren't alone.
No, no.
I just think it was a lousy job of communication and I don't know if the MIA really, I mean, as you said, I don't know if the MIA is like, why didn't, why didn't it happen?
I, I asked a few more questions today.
Yeah.
I understand, so thi, this was a new process this year.
Are we ready to talk about this now?
Oh, of course, that's.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just wanna, yeah, I'm sorry, I just was, you know, I listened to the, I listened to the coach and the team and.
Oh, sorry, I got carried away.
Remember what you learned today and tell that to my folks.
We, I would like to pick up this conversation a little bit, thanks.
Definitely.
Thanks, all right, Ken.
All right, Ken, what was it that you wanted?
Uh, yes, for, so I talked to Tony about, um. Might've been miscommunication, but with, to authorize Tony to go and look at firms to do an internal audit. To basically get some costs and come back. I, I did mention there's one firm and they did one in Burlington, that's a, a rabbit hole, but I'm gonna try and pull the name of that. Or maybe come back with some quotes. We might only get one, but, but something I think we need to look at.
That's good.
Next, can we, um, put reporting about the, uh, conference on the next agenda, just so we can?
Yeah, that's right.
Share out, each of us has our marching orders, so we know, we should share something, so those of you that can't go learn something.
You're all, I'm gonna do my mobile.
Well, you got your own homework, I got my homework.
Um, I did not mention this during my update, but there is a year-to-date budget summary that I left at everybody's station.
Uh, yes, yes, yeah.
My apologies, like I said, I.
Yeah.
Was, I was having presentation issues, so.
It's fine.
And then just in the next week, can we just have an update to see if all the O M L crap has all been cleared? Like just to, just figure out what, just be done with it.
I believe, after we, after this evening, that is the last of the ones that we have.
And if there hasn't been ones I've been responding to, can we just close the loop?
So every, everything has been, again, as the committee has voted on them, they've all been responded to, yeah. This would, this would be the only one that's outstanding.
Okay. And the motion for, oh, executive session, but the language changed.
Yeah, do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Um, so executive set, we're gonna, we're gonna propose to enter executive session. Um, for purpose two, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to collect, or to, excuse me, conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And this is specifically in, in reference to business office non-union personnel. Um, we are also entering for purpose one, MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, uh, twenty-one A one. To discuss an open meeting law complaint dated August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five and filed by Sheila Fitzpatrick against the Shawshank Regional School Committee. Uh, we will also be approving and potentially releasing executive session minutes. Um, and the committee will return to public session for, um, potential vote on the, um. Contract negotiations.
Okay, so moved? Second.
Yori?
Yes.
Ms. Dora, yes. Ms. Larson, yes.
That was on purpose.
Oh, I did? Oh, no, you're in a different place. I could everybody say.
Your list is not standing there.
I put, I put a list, so I won't.
Just to clarify, you said just to vote on the business.
You had to go into executive session.
Get to go, get to vote when we come back.
When we come back out, when we come back.
You're gonna have to vote on three, or is it just, just the business?
No, no, it should, it should just be the, uh, contract negotiation.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Huberty?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gillis?
Yes.
And we got everybody?
So do yourself.
And I vote yes.
And I vote yes.